Ready whenever you are, AGP. Okay. Welcome, everyone. Just looking for the queue on AGP. Looks like we're ready and live. Welcome to our regular city council meeting. This is Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. For the record, all viewers, we are at the Veterans Memorial Hall. We do have a quorum. All members are present. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order and just wish everyone happy Valentine's Day, our second most favorite place to be on Valentine's Day. And with that, if you'll please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. And for the pledge allegiance, Matt, will you lead us in the pledge?
I begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands our one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Is the mic check okay, AGP? Is everybody, is that okay for everybody else?
Testing.
Okay.
Testing.
Thanks. And with that, we'll move on to the next order. We got recognition. We don't have any items for recognition tonight. Close session report. We have no reportable actions from close session.
Correct, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to mayor and council member reports and announcements. And we'll start off to the left. Red, would you, you have some announcements?
Sure. Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to our staff for the excellent agenda packets that you put together for us. I know that it's very complicated stuff to put together, very detailed, but I appreciate it very much. And tonight, I want to recognize one of our super moral-based citizens, Carol Truesdale, for the extraordinary things that she does for our community. I'm sorry that Carol's not here tonight, but Carol is active in promoting and participating in our city's Neighborhood Watch program. Carol and her husband Larry are both CERT certified, Community Emergency Response Team, which means that they can help themselves and their neighbors in the event of emergency situations. They attend just about every city meeting, council, advisory boards, workshops, and they give great input. Carol is a working member of the Moral Bay Stakeholders, a citizens group that is helping the city work through the jet fuel tank demolition project on Panorama. And Carol has two great radio shows on our community radio station, 97.3 The Rock. Every Saturday afternoon, she hosts Let's Talk Food and Wine. And then, once a month, she joins the Y'all Ya Sisterhood on Friday mornings, third Friday of every month. I can't do justice to describing her show, but you need to hear it to believe it. And Carol posts almost every day on Next Door Moral Bay pertinent news that helps our neighbors keep up to date on important city issues. So I want to say very loudly, thank you, Carol, for all the things that you do to help our community. This coming Saturday, I want to once again say that I will have office hours at the giant chessboard from 9:00 until 10:00. Anybody who wants to come and chat with me about anything. And then, after that, at 10:00, I'll walk around and visit a few of our local businesses and see how things are going with them. I did that last month, and I visited several shops on the Embarcadero. And I heard that January is slow. The Highway 41 closure is hurting business, and the rain hasn't helped. So this is a good time for our community to stand together and to help one another. I urge everyone in Moral Bay, visit your local shops, spend your money here, let's all stand tall and help one another. And I mentioned the rain. I'd like to ask Mr. Buckingham, I know that we hope to do some street repairs in January, and I know that hasn't happened, and can you give us an update on what is going to happen?
I can, but I think I'll defer to Mr. Leivik, who will give a much crisper update than I.
Thank you, Mr. Buckingham. The city issued a contract for about $900,000 in street pavement preservation work right near the end of last year. And then, the much-needed rain started to happen, not just here in central California, but at the home base of the contractor where they have their aggregate materials. So they are waiting for things to dry out so they can get fresh aggregate and dry aggregate to mix with the oils for the pavement preservation. Looks like the next window will be towards the end of this month, last part of February, first part of March to get in here. Once they get in here, it's going to go rather quickly, probably three weeks worth of work. And then, they need to let the pavement coatings cure, and their subcontractor will be back in for striping. And then, we'll do, finish up that striping work at San Jacinto that we've all been looking forward to seeing. That's what I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Matt?
Yes. First, coming from the Harbor Advisory Board, I'd like to ask Eric if you could give us an update on dredging, including the scheduling, the different things that are going to be coming up?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman McCawiski. So, quick review and update on the dredging. As many of you know or can see, there's a dredge in our harbor moving a good quantity of sand. They're on about a $4.4 million project from the Corps of Engineers. We're lucky to get that core funding to get that job done. They're currently working the Navy Channel, which is off of our T-piers right now. Towards the end of the week, I believe, they're going to be moving down to the Morro Channel off of Tylen's Park, which is the next area of quantity that they need to get out. They've got about 280,000 cubic yards to move. They've moved about 40,000 so far. As you've seen, it's being pipelined out, the hydraulic dredge, which puts it through a pipeline. Pipeline comes out of Coleman Beach and runs down the dirt Embarcadero, and then across the creek and on down past the high school. So just advise the public of that and warn them of staying clear of that pipeline and the pipeline outlet down by the high school. The dredge does weekly water quality monitoring to see what the water quality is in the dredge area to make sure it's good. This project's gone under full federal and state environmental review. It is clean sand and gravel. At the outlet, it can be a bit smelly because they get into decaying organic matter that's anaerobic when it's down on the bottom underneath the sand. And when it gets exposed to oxygen, it can tend to bloom a little bit and get smelly, but it's pretty short term. It's dark, and that will change as well. As you notice, the sand dunes that are opposite the cloisters and the beach tract, they're nice and white. And they're nice and white for a reason because that sand, a lot of it's come from the harbor entrance and from the dredging that's occurred over the years. So it will lighten up. And then, once they're done with the mooring channel, they're going to be moving back out towards the sand trap area, which is the area outside of the channel, near the South Jetty. Come March 1st, they need to be off the beach with the pipeline because of snowy plover nesting season. They'll be pulling the pipeline off the beach probably the couple of last days of February, and then moving the pipeline on out underwater, out the harbor entrance to the nearshore disposal site, which is where the dredge ship of Quinta goes, if you remember it coming every year, which it will be here in May for doing another $3 million of work, which is good. They'll be here about a month. And then, once they finish with that, hopefully, they'll get all the quantities out. I will preach patience to the public. The dredge is not necessarily the quietest thing in the world, but it's necessary work that needs to get done. It happens every five to seven years. They're here for maybe six to eight weeks. The dredge company's currently doing some more steps right now to try and minimize the noise, but they do like to operate 24/7 because the quicker they can get done, the quicker they can get out of here and get out of everybody's way. To the boating public, watch out for the pipeline. You'll notice a bunch of white and yellow mooring buoys around the dredge operation. Those either mark the anchors for the dredge or where the pipeline route is. Your best calling the dredge or call the Harvard Department if you're unsure where to travel with relation to those buoys. Generally, they're safe to navigate near. They're just marking things on the bottom. There's nothing that should be floating, but always use caution when operating around the dredge. And Otten Design Build is the company that got the contract from Corps of Engineers. And I think Pat Royce, project representative, sitting back there in the back. So thanks to them for being here and doing a great job.
Thanks, Eric, for that update. I do have another request. Dave, I wonder if you could give us an update on the police chief outreach process?
Sure thing. Thank you. We are nearing the end of our recruitment process for our next police chief. The assistance we've had in recruiting has gone very, very well. We had 40 candidates apply for the position. Thirty-seven of those were deemed qualified. They had the basic qualifications for the job. There are a number of very good candidates. A team of us went through those applications with our recruiter's assistants and identified the top six candidates. Those six candidates are traveling here next week to interview. They'll interview between, before two different panels. Those panels are made up of a number of law enforcement experts from around the region, number of community members from here in Morro Bay, and some management and executive employees from the city and from other cities. And those two panels will interview. Chief Todd is coming back to help participate in the process. And those two panels will provide their input to Chief Todd and I. And we will hopefully be able to determine late next week or early the following week who our next police chief will be. There'll be a little bit of a pause after that because we need to go through an exceptional background process. The background vetting takes place after a primary candidate is identified. So it'll be, it'll be some weeks after that before our new police chief is actually here. But it's a good process with lots of community involvement in selecting the chief.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Marleus?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody out there that we still have some advisory board positions open. And the process, I believe the end date is the 24th of February. So if you're interested in joining one of our citizen advisory boards, I hope you will check out the website. The application is there. And please apply. We'd love to have you. And also, I don't have regular office hours, but if anybody wants to talk to me, they can give me a call anytime, 772-1452. I'd love to talk to the citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, Marleus. And I just have a couple of brief announcements. One, as far as Highway 41, Mayor O'Malley from the city of Atascadero and I co-authored a letter to Caltrans just thanking their staff and crews. And we, you know, sent that out to all of city council that was to be aware of that. And I just want to mention that because Caltrans had to do a lot of work just to get it open. I understand there's still more work to be done. But just there's a shout out to, all the crews have been working 24/7 in between all the rainstorms to get it to where it is today. There's a couple folks, Steve Balladin and Ryan Turner from Caltrans. They're geotechnical engineers. They did a lot of work helping with the crews and kind of identifying the work processes. And then, Jim Shivers from Caltrans, he was our communications guy. It was great to have the regular communications to give us a status of what was going on. So I know it's been, we've had some employees that have had to get detour around to get here to work, as well as just our tourists and just the neighbors in Atascadero. So it's great to collaborate with Mayor O'Malley and send out a thank you letter for that. So just want to give a shout out to Caltrans for doing their work on that. And then, one other announcement. We have had some study sessions pre-council meetings. And in the past, we have had some council meetings where we've had large agendas. So just throwing out there that looking at the option of having a special meeting starting at 4:00 to do some business items as we get through the year and discuss some business items, there's a lot of work to be done. And the option is maybe starting a couple, having a couple special meetings starting at 4:00 prior to regular city council meeting, or staying beyond 11:00 to get to some of those items. So looking at those options, and we'll keep you abreast of how we can do that, but looking at all our options to get through our agenda workload and keep things moving. So that's all I have there. And anything else? We've got everybody for announcements. And with that, we have one presentation for tonight in our Chamber of Commerce. It's a fourth quarter report. And Erica Crawford, welcome. Glad to have you.
Okay. Thank you for having me, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. I'm honored. I'm Erica Crawford with the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce. It's the first time that I'm addressing the new council. So I'll start right in, as I do, with our mission and purpose. This is very wordy. If there are three things that you take home from this, it's that we empower business. We have been doing for quite some time, since 1956. So if you think of all of the things that have happened in the world since 1956 to now, first man on the moon, Nixon, Reagan, Clinton era, all these things, all this volatility, things that would have manifested here locally, this chamber has been in operation through all of that, and we're still here. And that is largely because of our volunteers. So our board of directors, oops, we've got Chairperson Cindy Edwards from Sinstop, Treasurer John Elliott, Secretary Sandy Twist. So this is our executive committee. This is all of us at the installation dinner a few weeks back. And then, below is our strategic planning retreat. So we just did this yesterday, so we're all kind of buzzing. It was great. We got a facilitator, got in and did, you know, looked at immediate needs, two-year, five-year, 10-year. We're really being strategic, moving forward, and we're happy about that. So Joshua Walter, I think, other business leaders here, who are my board of directors. Fun infographic, this is a lot of why I come to see you guys. We, you know, manage a contract to operate our visitor center. Those are services running to the city. We like graphics, so I'll start here, but we have some statistics on the following page. So we connecting visitors to you. 7,000 people come through our front door, 8300 total inquiries, 1,300 phone calls. Our top referrals are retail, recreation, dining, lodging. We started, the entity that was running the visitor center in 2014 started recording categories, and in 2014, we've continued that. We've just started recording day trippers. We're finding quite a few people who are coming through and just going from one location to the next, want to grab a meal, something to do. We did an open house, and we have adopted some new technology. We certainly didn't invent anything. We're just kind of inventing, you know, bringing things in. So we've got Google Chromecast. Part of what we tried to do is have a kiosk available so that when visitors are coming in, they can get online, they can look for things to do, they can see a map, they can book a hotel room. So we have a kiosk now set up, very easy to use. We've got three screens now that can link to a television set that's mounted on the wall. So if you've got a group of four, five, six people coming in and looking for a place to stay, and they're all, maybe English is a second language, they need visuals, this is very helpful for us to be able to accommodate them and make sure that they're getting what they need. And then, we do have a familiar face to some. Sharon Buffau has joined our staff. She worked in the visitor center prior, and we're just delighted. She is a delight. She's wonderful with people. So we're happy to have Sharon back. So statistics since the relocation. If we look at this, we can see 2014, 2015 is in the middle, 2016 off to the right. You see dips, peaks, valleys. You know, quarter four comes down in each of these graphs. You see in 2015, it comes down pretty significantly in October. And that yellow line there represents the relocation of the visitor center. In 2016, we've been working hard to round that curve. So I think this shows that we are making an effort and that our effort is being met with response. That said, we're about half down. You know, our traffic to the visitor center is 53% lower in 2016 than it was in 2014. But it did perform 30% better in '16 than it did in '15. So people are finding us. We're getting them what they need, and accommodation is one of those things. So in 2014, with that high volume, we referred 101 people to accommodations or lodging, 55. So we're proportionally, I think, on par with where we were. So we're the chamber. We also do programs. We were quite busy in fourth quarter of 2016. It's hard to kind of remember back. October, we did a candidates forum. This was very important for our business owners, 54% of whom do not live in Morro Bay, but who are coming to our market five, six, seven days a week and need to know what's going on here. So we were happy to host that and sponsor that. We did a mixer at Stax Wine Bar. Great, well-attended. The Morro Bay Trick or Treat in partnership with the city, which was a great community event, and connecting our community to our business owners. They were giving away candy, walking around in our downtown. The membership summit is something that I'm very excited about, and I want to do more and more of these. The city, Mayor Irons and Scott came through, did a, we kind of bookended a session where you were talking about revitalization projects, general plan updates, vital information. Before that, we were giving our business owners kind of implementable knowledge about advertising, Instagram, kind of coming into this new technology age, and how can you use these tools that are actually free and effective. And then, we ended with a workforce development session. This is something that chambers, I'm just fresh back from our WACE conference in LA two weeks ago. Workforce development is just as important as networking for chambers moving into the modern era. So we are very interested in continuing to educate our business owners on hiring practices and kind of, we have that just one program that the Slow Coastal Unified School District is doing, where it's a mentorship program for business owners to connect with high school students and do a paid internship. So we're very interested in that. We're going to get a booth for that. We did the mixer at Mike's to celebrate the 75th anniversary. Councilman Heding was at that. And of course, our holiday open house and member orientation that I just showed you. Another one of our programs is this Main Street Market. Looks a little different. Graphics, you know, it's amazing what that can do. We're recruiting new vendors. We're looking forward to a solid spring/summer season. We, it was slow. You know, the rain hurt the market vendors as well. It was 10 Saturday market days in the whole quarter. But it's still managed to see, you know, higher vendor gross sales on an average day. And we still earned about, or the vendors earned collectively over $48,000 from those efforts. In November, we did our first real membership drive. It was multifaceted membership drive. We did a discount passport to kind of engage people to get them into our shops locally. It yielded 15% growth in our members. I think total members, that low line, that bottom line, shows that in 2016, over '15, we experienced 64% growth. I wish that I could stand there and say it's because we got 64% new businesses in Morro Bay. It's not the case. It's that the businesses are finding the chamber again. We've become a dynamic group. We are a catalyst for business here. We are a convenor for leadership. We're really excited about that. And I think that the statistics are showing that people are finding us again because we've been here for 61 years. Another part of our programs that we've developing is our advertising. So we resurrected a mailer. This is the only multi-industry business mailer that exists in Morro Bay. I don't think it's been published since 2012. We're doing it in-house. On that little back page, we engaged with Jane Heath, who's one of our lawyers here in town and a chamber member, to write a legal brief. And our next one will be doing an insurance brief, really kind of educating on the practicals, but also inspirational stories, things like that. We have some affordable advertising through that publication, and we've been working our partnerships. So we have really strong partnerships for our members and for our future members as well, with Morro Bay Life, Bay News, and K-Pig Radio. That'll be done end of March, but that's still available now. So we'll just finish here. We've got a great chamber mixer scheduled for tomorrow. It's a co-mixer with the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce. We're expecting a couple hundred people. Should be really busy. Charlie Yates at the inn has been working really hard to get this going. It's kind of like a wedding theme, so it should be really fun. Lots of different vendors. And, you know, I'll echo what Red said here with this shop local, you know, that I want to definitely recognize the efforts of Chief Knuckles and Jennifer Little with tourism and their efforts of informing the business community about what was going on with Caltrans so that we could be communicative with the business community. Because as I'm out, as you are, you know, the rain and in an already very difficult season, some of our businesses are experiencing some real hardship. So I just want to encourage, in a community that passed, you know, measure Q where we're looking at sales tax dollars and looking at improving the level of service that you expect as a community member, if we look at engaging with our local businesses as a way to improve your services, I think that's a great way to look at it. It's neighborly, so. And that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Erica, thanks very much. Were there questions or from any of them council?
Hey, Erica, great presentation as always. One quick question for you. Are you planning to do or have you done any kiosks peripherally in other businesses around the other areas of town?
With the visitor center?
Yes.
Yes. And actually, I just got a phone with Mo Amar up in Pacific Grove today. He's the chamber CEO. They have a satellite, so they're in Pacific Grove. They have a satellite next to the Monterey Aquarium, you know? Very smart, trying to kind of channel business over to where they're located and where their chamber office is. Part of that just one job fair, I've been thinking maybe is to engage like a street team, you know, and kind of get another labor force to get out there and get a kiosk going, not just a plain old kiosk with information, but a person. You know, we need somebody engaging to show our visitors that there's a lot going on, and here's a thing, and let me direct you over here, make a referral over here. People are finding us, you know, but I think if we're there, our ability to refer to so many, it's just amplified, you know? So I think it's absolutely a smart thing for us to be doing, and it's something that's on my radar. Okay.
Great. Thanks for that. Sorry I'll miss the mixer tomorrow night, Erica, but enjoy. Thank you. So we have, I have two speaker slips for public comment. So we do have speaker slips in the back. We have our consent agenda. We've got one public hearing, and we've got two business items. So if you can't stay for items that are later on in the agenda, if you want to fill out a speaker slip and speak at public comment, that's great. But for public comment, right now, I've got two speaker slips. And as we move on to public comment, we'll start with our business spot. And I'd like to invite Dana Charvet. Dana, did I get the last name pronounced right? You have a new business for us. You want to introduce yourself?
Dana Charvey.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff, thank you for letting me be here. Hello, I'm grateful. I'm Dana Charvey, the owner of the Grateful Body Training Center in downtown Morro Bay, where we offer fitness, martial arts, Tai Chi, Qi Gong, and transformational health coaching. For fitness, we have a core body training, a stretch and tone, ab thigh and butt shape, and advanced athletic performance training for any sport. All this comes from my experience as a former Olympic Judo team member and coach for the USA Boxing Team. I was also a member and coach of the U.S. National Martial Arts Team. I owned and taught at several training centers and chose to semi-retire here. I have my PhD and was a professional athlete who's been teaching for over 35 years and received a Silver Lifetime Achievement Award. I'm in the Masters Hall of Fame, and I'm a six-degree black belt. I have a Judo and Jiu-Jitsu program, which I utilize my experience as the Olympic team member, and I also received a Jiu-Jitsu Instructor of the Year Award. I teach kickboxing and boxing. Like any other instructor in the area, I was a professional full-contact fighter who's been inducted into the Masters Hall of Fame and into the Hall of Heroes. Before I moved here from Ventura County, I worked for Interface of Children and Family Services that ran programs such as Big Brothers and Big Sisters. There, I became the program director of a program called Yes for Kids, which stands for Youth Education and Safety, Building Confidence Through Achievement. I've also had the privilege of training in a wide variety of Tai Chi styles. I offer Qi Gong, moving meditation, Shaolin breathing sets, and Feng Shui. The special program we offer is the Transformational Health Coaching taught by Tammy Cruz. She's a licensed certified health coach. Her program empowers people to achieve their goals. She helps coach people to follow through on their health and wellness goals. What I've learned over the years is to keep things simple, and that out of all the things there are in life, what you think, what you say, how you train, and what's said to you when you train, the words you speak are more important than you think. So know this, the Grateful Body is here to support the community through a unique style of teaching, which goes beyond the physical benefits and helps transform the individual with a lifestyle of grateful and healthy mindset. I'm not only very happy and grateful to live here, but I also have the opportunity to serve this community with my experience. That was easier than it looks. We're in 850 Shasta, and our phone number is 805-701-7397. Thank you for this opportunity, and I hope to see you there. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Dana, thanks very much. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
We'll stop by and visit. Thank you. Great way to start off our public comment. And with that, we'll, we have about four or five speaker slips for public comment. We'll open it up. David Nelson, followed by Betty Winholz.
Good evening, council. David Nelson, live in Morro Bay. And I'm here for two reasons tonight. One, you know, we had a sewer meeting not too long ago, and, you know, we hear a lot about how much public input we're putting into this. Now, at that meeting, I brought up again for the multiple time that we should start really looking at alternative technology. We're years into this, and we have had nobody through here showing us what we can do. We had a final plan come up and what plant did we have? The plant that wasn't was rejected by the Coastal Commission for where they wanted to put it, but it's still 70s technology. We're not seeing anything. We're seeing $100 million when I wasn't alone in seeing that there's other districts that are getting sewer plants and that's basically what we're getting bid on here for 38 or 40 million dollars. Now, at least show us people the difference, you know. What we're, what I'm seeing is a high-energy use, old technology sewer plant. And I've been asking for this since 2004 when I called for that discharge to be out of here. And yet, people, and I'm not alone, other people have asked for it, but we get ignored. I mean, that's why people don't show up for these meetings and then you use the publicity that, well, we're having lots of public input, but the public input's being railroaded down the middle without listening to the people. I mean, this should be the most basic, and I've said it before, the most basic thing is to have a vision before you go ahead and spend millions of dollars on a vision that doesn't work. And if you have a vision, you put it out there and we talk about it because I don't know everything. I don't know hardly anything, but I know when I see something that seems ridiculous and what I've seen is kind of ridiculous. I mean, in the last two years, you've spent multi-million, a couple of million dollars just about on environmental studies that don't make sense for what we should have here. The second thing I want to talk about is, you know, three years ago, this town voted to have a marijuana dispensary. We spent thousands of dollars on a lawyer who figured it out. It was one of the best jobs he did in his tenure as our lawyer, yet it gets side, side and stonewalled because people don't believe that it should be legal. Well, it is legal and I'm really tired of, you know, participating in democracy and then having it mocked. And it's mocked when you have a resolution put on the ballot and the majority of people vote for it and say, do it. We have our lawyer telling us we could have made $100,000 a year and you're telling me we don't have money to fix the streets. Explain that to me. I mean, I know you have this reefer madness mentality woven into our society, but it's proven scientifically and I know a lot of people don't believe in science, but it was there and somebody stated different science and statistics a few weeks ago.
Can I have to ask you to conclude?
Well, you know what I'm talking about.
Thanks. Thanks, David. Betty Winholtz followed by Janice Peters.
Good evening. My name's Betty Winholtz. I want to speak about the public opinion survey on the monkey survey that the city's been using online. I'm all for getting public input. You know that that's true and I believe that you need more public input, but you can't get good information if your tool's not good. And my belief is that the tool that you're using is biased, both in terms of how people are self-selecting to fill it out. The information that they're given is not uniform. People's background knowledge is different and there's other ways. Sometimes it's erroneous information. I'm, I'm not a statistician by trade, but I did get in hay in my graduate stats course. I do tutor, tutor statistics at the college level as well as high school. So I feel like I know bias when I read it. And I'm, my feeling is that these surveys are biased. And so I would like to encourage you that if it's a consultant that's urging you to use these surveys, that you get a consultant that knows how to write questions that are unbiased. If it's your city staff that's using the tools, then at the least you need to get a Cal Poly graduate student over here as an intern to write those for you because your input's not going to be as good, any better than what your tool is. And I will object whenever you try to use this data either with another state agency as evidence of what the community wants or if you're using it for policy direction because it's not accurately representing the community. I went to the park today and I'm moving on to a second topic and I was disturbed by the amount of herbicide that was being used around the edges of our parks. With the state of our bees and our monarchs and other things, the use of pesticides should be passe or there should be another way of doing it. But when I see anywhere from one to five feet of dead grass or weeds around the edge of something, I feel like it's being overused. 10 years ago, this, the city council at that time passed a resolution that we were going to start weaning ourselves off of pesticide and herbicidal uses. And that I don't see as being something that's happened. And so I would encourage you to look at the use of these poisons in our sensitive environment. We are in a rainy season. I know some of them supposedly have a very short life, but it's disturbing to see, you know, one to five feet of dead grass in an area where it should be lush and green. And I would think a lawnmower or a cutting edge would be a better tool than herbicides. Thanks.
Thank you. Janice Peters followed by Peggy Mandeville.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Janice Peters, Morro Bay resident. I want to second what Betty said. I did take that survey and there were a couple of things that I had to say none of the above or you don't give me the option that I need to express what I feel about that. So I did a lot of notations. Anyway, I'm here because, starting this Friday, we have live theater in Morro Bay. We are opening on Golden Pond, the poster's up there, at the St. Peters by the Sea Episcopal Church in their parish hall and we have turned it into a cabin in Maine and we are hoping to have a lot of people come. We run three weekends for our main shows, on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and at Sunday at 3:00. And tickets are $20 for adults, $15 for students and we hope you will all be attending those. Our champagne party opening is this Sunday after the show and those tickets are 25 because they include champagne and refreshments. So, we are excited about it. We have a full season. We're running three full shows. The other two are, and then there were none, which you may know as Ten Little Indians, the Agatha Christie Show. That will play in July and August. And then the Member of the Wedding will play in October, November. In between, we're doing readers theaters, which will just run for one weekend and they are not fully staged productions. They are a little bit of blocking, a little bit of costuming, but primarily they are the actors reading the scripts. The first one is one that I have long wanted to direct and am finally doing, Seven. It's about seven women in seven different countries in this world who have suffered abuse in some measure and what they did to overcome it. And it's very pertinent because one of the stories, and this was in the 90s, was about Russia and domestic violence, which had just then, because of these women's efforts, been declared a crime. I don't know if you remember, but two weeks ago, they decided it wasn't. So it's a rather pertinent subject. I'm excited about it. That one's going to be in May. I'll be back to tell you more about it as these come along, but we really hope to see you there. On Golden Pond is a lovely family show and we hope to see you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice. Peggy Mandeville followed by Sharice Hanson. Welcome.
Good evening. Peggy Mandeville, Morro Bay. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak on item C2, since it looks like a rather large agenda. I appreciate the opportunity to speak during public comment. Additionally, I appreciate the opportunity to provide input on the city's budget process. I attended the community forum a few weeks ago, which I thought was very helpful and informative for both the staff as well as the residents. And with that, I have two comments on two different goals. Goal number one that you have before you tonight, I thought that the, all of the goals were well-written, just a few minor proposed additions. On item number seven regarding the paid parking downtown, I thought it might be better to say, for council to consider various approaches for parking management and include paid parking as one of those components. And that would open up other opportunities. And then regarding item two for completing the Wharf Project, looking at cost is one of the components of that goal. And that could be read, that it includes implementation of a physically conservative, comprehensive water resource policy program and infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Peggy. If you have those written, could you submit those? That'd be great. I was trying to keep notes real quickly and they were probably scribbling as well. That would be helpful as we get to that discussion. Thank you. So thanks, Peggy. And Sharice Hanson?
Hello. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. For those of you who haven't met me or the audience, my name is Sharice Hanson, owner at Under the Sea Gallery at 725 and 833 in Embarcadero here in Morro Bay. In the coming months, we will be looking at options for the current shop address and its immediate future, my, my shop address. On one hand, there is a choice per recommendation by city staff to go with a larger-scale waterfront hotel, or you may choose one of the other options, such as TLC Family Enterprises. TLC is Travis and myself, which proposed a boutique hotel on the second floor and numerous small business owners on the first floor, all serving the public. Our proposal is loaded with public benefit with interactive play area and innovative immersive viewing, water viewing platforms. A little about me is I've been a welcoming face to all who visit the Embarcadero for 17 years. In that time, I have listened and catered to the needs and wants of our patrons. And Red, I hope to talk about these topics, not on Saturday. I'll come and visit you. My comment today is in regards to the Embarcadero and what our community really needs. I believe really strongly about this, not just as somebody who would benefit from it, but somebody who also would really enjoy what it is that we are proposing. It will provide a fun, safe, family-serving atmosphere imperative to the center of the Embarcadero. I think that the center of the Embarcadero is where we need a lot of activity and families are what we need to start looking forward to and what we want to present to the patrons that come to Morro Bay as well as the community itself, bringing them down there to the Embarcadero. It will also provide affordable options for dining. We will have more opportunities for employment. I want to note the need that Morro Bay has for head of household jobs, especially with Diablo closing. We need jobs that will allow those who work here to live here and I am lucky to be able to do that and I would really like to continue to do that. Visitors, I also wanted to mention that visitors that come over from the 41 absolutely benefit our, they will benefit from our proposal. And they also, this last weekend, because of the opening of the 41, it was so much better. Yes, it's been raining, but wow, it was a lot better. Thank goodness. We need to think about the consumers who have made us successful for all of these years and work to cater to them as well. I clearly enjoy an active, exciting storefront, as many of you may have noticed. A storefront that invites passersby, gets them out of their car and walking on our streets. Damn, the center of the Embarcadero and the center needs energy and shops and fund structures. So everybody who watch, watches right now, if you could actually voice your opinion as to what you'd like to see. And we made a really good proposal. It's a good read. We put our heart and soul into it, so.
Can I have to ask you to conclude?
I know you guys have a lot going on, but please give it a gander. Thanks.
Thanks, Sharice. Thank you. That concludes our public comment. And with that, I'm scanning the audience. Don't see any more speaker slips here or any hands in the audience, so I'll close public comment and move back to, we're moving on to consent. I don't have any speaker slips for the consent agenda? Oh, we do. Okay, good. Thank you all. So we have, we do have, are all these, okay, A6, A6, okay, great. So we have four speaker slips for items on consent, item A6. So with that, I'll open it up for public comment on consent. First one up is Pandora Nash-Carnar. Pardon me. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Pandora Nash-Carnar. I live in Los Osos, but if it helps, I happen to live on a house on the bay and I have a boat in Morro Bay.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My boat's been on Morro Bay for 17 years and hopefully it'll be there for 17 more. I have communicated with each of you by letter and sending photographs. I spend part of the summer in, on Vancouver Island in British Columbia and in a town called Sydney, which is smaller than Morro Bay. And I'm very excited about what you're about to embark on tonight with the Marine Services facilities. I was just recently appointed to that ad hoc committee and I'm delighted because I'm a great proponent of the haul-out facility. But what I really like about the potential is, and I know that I've turned the information over to Eric and I'm sure he's shared it with you, and then I shared it with you in the two letters that I wrote, is in Sydney, just one of the haul-out facilities has 70 full-time head of household jobs and another 50 vendors from outside that service that facility. They're able to take boats about the same size that you're looking at here. But what's so exciting to me is that those of us who have boats, if you're not a boater, you probably haven't experienced the problem of having to take your boat south or north. If you go south, you have to go around what's called point conception. And a sailboat doesn't go very fast and no matter how fast I try to sail the boat, it takes 24 hours to get around to Ventura to haul out. And I spend a lot of money down there, which I would much rather spend here, but more importantly, I'd much rather not make that trip. So I want to thank you very much for what you're about to embark on because I think not only will it help the boating and the maritime community locally, but we're missing a lot of potential business. Those people who come from the north to go south and vice versa, they know they can't get help here, so they keep going and spend their money elsewhere. So not only will it be an opportunity for those of us who have boats to take better care of them because frankly, I'd propose, I'd postpone going to Ventura for another year if I could to get the work done down there. If I was able to do it here, I would do it here more often. So not only will the haul-out facility bring you more jobs, I'm convinced it will bring you more boats who will also need help and be able to get it here, but it will provide a really added benefit to the working waterfront concept that you're about to take on to. So thank you so much for taking this on. I think it's a fabulous idea whose time has come. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dana McClish and then Lexi Bell.
Good evening. My name is Dana McClish and I'm Morro Bay resident. I'm also on the Harbor Advisory Board. And after attending some of the planned Morro Bay stakeholder meetings and some of the other community workshops, the ad hoc committee thought that it would be a presentation about the Marine Services Facility would be helpful information. So here we go. Here's some photographs of what we're talking about.
I'm holding you to three minutes, Dana.
Okay. Building a sustainable working waterfront. Morro Bay can be a colorful example of maritime life along the California coast. Working waterfronts have become standalone tourist attractions, featuring fishing industry and its harvest, including amenities enjoyed by visitors seeking the active coastal lifestyle, sailing, kayaking, paddleboard, sport fishing, whale watching, et cetera. Dock and water-based tours that foster education about marine life and maritime history. Tourists want the authentic, meaningful experience and unique opportunities that the working waterfront will provide. Building a Marine Service Facility, an integral part of a working waterfront economy. This is essential for a vibrant commercial and recreational waterfront, initiates much-needed local services to boat owners and for visiting mariners, establishes new head of household jobs and creates new marine industry support businesses, stimulates the development of new retail and service businesses, provides dramatic environmental benefits, gets the boat maintenance out of the water, improves water quality in the bay, and contributes to a thriving local economy. The environment, the Morro Bay attraction. Coastal recreation contributes a large portion of our tourism revenue. Safe water-based recreation depends on clean water and safe harbor. People are more likely to visit coastal areas when they perceive the environment is clean. And over 43% of all adult Americans visit a seacoast or estuary at least once each year. 8% of the American population visits the California coast annually, bringing hundreds of millions of revenue to the coast. And if anybody would like more information, they can contact me through the city website. And if anybody would like more information, they can contact me through the city website, on the email list for the Harbor Advisory Board, and I thank you very much.
Thanks Dana, appreciate it. Lexi Bell, welcome. And then Jeremiah O'Brien.
Hello, I'm Lexi Bell. I'm the Director of the Morro Bay National Estuary Program. And I'm just here to talk a little bit more about the Marine Services Facility, because I don't often have a chance to come in front of the council, and I'm very happy that you're having on the consent agenda to have the RFQ go through for the Marine Services Facility. It'll be really helpful to the ad hoc committee, of which I'm a part, to help us get more information that we can provide to the Harbor Advisory Board, and they provide to you in making this future decision about the boatyard facility. I just wanted to emphasize that the estuary program is supportive of a facility that is properly sited and properly managed and meeting all of the stormwater requirements for such a site, that getting boat maintenance out of the water and into a boatyard facility will really benefit the water quality in the estuary and in the bay. And that in turn benefits our whole community. Cleaner water means better and more recreation. It means safer conditions for our residents and our visitors. And it's another way of highlighting the beauty of our bay that everyone comes to visit. So thank you very much for putting this on the agenda and for discussing it, and I'm happy to continue participating in the process and hopefully see a project down in the future.
Thanks Lexi. Jeremiah O'Brien.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and city staff. I just also wanted to reiterate, thank you very much for considering the RFQ for the boatyard here. And I was thinking about the boatyard and thinking about some of the tentative thoughts and plans for the future in Morro Bay here. And we all know that number, you know, one of the bigger facilities here that we know or hope in the future will change is the power plant, and then we've got the Tri-W area that we know will be eventually developed in one fashion or another. And just those two, those two particular sites have the ability to change the entire face of the city of Morro Bay, particularly the power plant. And Morro Bay, right now, wants to keep their relevance to the ocean and our working waterfront and so forth. And I think having this boatyard facility in place will enable us in the future to keep that relevance to the sea and to keep the working waterfront, because we don't know right now what will be developed in any of these big projects that we will be facing in the future. But I think it's very important that we develop this now, and then with the uncertainty of what those projects might bring, we'll be prepared to keep Morro Bay as a working waterfront and keep our relevance to the ocean. So I think that's a big consideration in this particular boatyard here. And I did want to add, while I'm here, a big thank you to Janice Peters, by the way, and bringing a theater to Morro Bay is terrific. I can't tell you how much my wife and I appreciate it, but it's, I'm sure, we're not alone in that, but I hope everybody gets to enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Great Jeremiah, thank you. And how many more speaker slips for the consent agenda? So I'm scanning the field, looks like we're covered, so I'll close the consent and bring it back to council. And we can discuss the consent, and then I'll discuss the public comment portion of things as well. I'll just make comments on item A6, unless someone wants to pull it, but I was just going to make general comment. This, are you going to pull it? Okay, so we have a consensus to pull item A6. Is there anything else on the agenda people want to pull? Seeing none? I'll take a motion to approve items A1 through A5.
So moved?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye? Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item A6. Who wants to go first? Marlaus?
I just had some questions. So if I can go with my questions, that would be fine. I just noted in the staff report that there was work during 2016 with a private development interest to build the facility, but it did not come to fruition. And I was just curious to know what happened, why it didn't, if anything that would help us to understand.
Sure, thank you for the question. We did have a private development interest come forward about the time we were getting ready to embark on financial feasibility. We worked with that particular person for better part of a year, maybe a little bit over a year, trying to draw out what his full proposal was. And as time went on, we weren't, the Harbor Advisory Board and the ad hoc committee and staff didn't feel like we're getting enough out of his proposal to really make any kind of forward progress on it. And he agreed that an RFQ process may be the next best step as well, and he would participate in it. So we basically ceased further pursuing of that and pursued the RFQ process instead.
Okay, thank you. And then also, you noted that at a Harbor Advisory Board meeting, you recommended approval of option A, and you have in the packet option A and option B for basically the route that would be taken on the boat when the boats are hauled out. And I'm just curious to know, it sounds like you preferred option A, and I'm curious to know why that was the case and if that came to council.
Correct. So that design, those concept designs were an exercise to see which of three potentially competing uses could be put into that parking lot and the surrounding area. Boatyard Maritime Museum, which the city's previously been committed to for the last 20-plus years, and public parking. And so we hired RRM Design Group to look at that, and those two concepts are what they came up with to say, yeah, these three key things could potentially fit. They're not, while they're a starting point, if we move forward with the boatyard Marine Service Facility, they're not the working documents, and it'd be a long road to get there. The real difference between A and B, as you pointed out, was the route to which you'd get to the yard from the water. Really, the only functional change on the ground that those two differences made were the number of parking spaces, public parking spaces you could create out of it and get out of it, with option B having a few more public parking spaces available than A. But A being a more direct, don't wind through a parking lot in front of a restaurant to get there, became the more preferred alternative.
Okay, thank you. And where do you plan to advertise the RFQ? How do you intend to reach out to people and let them know about it?
The aforementioned interested party that we're working with for about a year. I've got two other boatyard operators, one north, one south, that are interested that we'll send it to. There's a boatyard professional trade organization in the state and in the nation that we'll forward it to. It'll go on the city's website, in the bid posting section, so there's a lot of contractors and developers that subscribe to that. We'll also be reaching out in the boatyard world beyond just the two that I mentioned and fanning it out as far as I can, and other members of the ad hoc committee as well have experience in that professional industry.
Okay, very good. And then a last question. You noted that if you did not receive any responses to the RFQ, that you would move forward with a feasibility study. And I'm curious to know what the logic would be if there was no interest expressed to the RFQ for conducting a feasibility study.
If, and hopefully we don't, knock on wood, don't get any interest out of the RFQ. It's merely a snapshot in time in terms of, is there anybody out there interested right now? It's not to say that a boatyard could not be financially feasible. If we don't have any private developer interest in a design-build-operate sort of scenario, that's not to say that it may not be a feasible project for the city to build and then lease out. So I think the financial feasibility would really be a final look at, okay, we've got nobody interested in RFQ, let's do financial feasibility, do a real true final last look and see if this thing will be financially feasible.
Okay, thank you.
Great, Marlaus, John?
Thank you for the staff report. The question I had, first question I had, had to do with section three on background, which says in March 2016, the council authorized staff to seek and engage a consultant to conduct a financial feasibility study, including authorization of a $50,000 expenditure. I guess my question was, it came to council, and being new on council, I remember discussing that in some detail. And we had looked at the Lisa Weiss initial assessment study, market assessment study, and the determination of council was that further financial feasibility needed to be determined in order to move any concept forward. And it seemed like it just paused or stopped. And now we have an RFQ, which is contrary to the direction that was given. So I'm trying to understand how that all happened, and why the edict from the council didn't occur.
So the pause or stop was also at council direction when that private developer interest came forward and said, hey, don't do financial feasibility, I can build this boatyard for you. So that was at the same time, and we went forward with that developer, and as I explained to Marlaus, it didn't pan out. As we went through that process, it became apparent that an RFQ process would be a good measure, a good prudent measure to take as an interim to potentially not have to do financial feasibility if we get an entity interested in potentially participating in RFQ process. By the way that if you get a developer or boatyard operator that wants to come in and help design-build-operate this thing, they've done the financial feasibility, and they're satisfied that they're willing to move forward in potential RFP process, so they kind of shortcut your financial feasibility process and do that for you by way of their interest. That makes sense?
It makes sense. I'm just trying to recall the, well, I guess maybe the further question is, what's taken so long to vet a single individual that maybe had some interest, or a single entity that had some interest? Why does it take 11 months to do that? And, because at least what I hear from a lot of members of the community is that it's dragging on, it's dragged on for a lot of years, and I don't know how to answer that. So what was the issue with the individual that took 11 months to get to the point where you decided maybe this is not going to work?
It was a matter of working through staff, the ad hoc committee and Harbor Advisory Board, as he submitted his proposals and trying, and to be quite honest and frank with you, trying to draw out the necessary information we felt would be needed to move anything forward. And it took us 11 months, because it took us 11 months. I've got no excuses, it just did. Could we have shortened the timeline up? I don't know, I'm working through Harbor Advisory Board and staff. It just took time, and it took time to draw the information out of them, and at some point, we decided it's time to pull the plug and move on.
Fair enough. One more. Regarding the section 1.2 on the RFQ, with regard to respondents, let's see, paragraph, excuse me, sentence three says, first sentence, third part there, it says, "Or contracting, excuse me, contracting those operations as well as having the capacity to finance and facilitate directly or indirectly the design, installation, and operation of the project." Could you interpret that for me in terms of what you're looking for there specifically?
Sure. I think our idea with this RFP is to not constrain it to a single.
RFQ.
RFQ, sorry. Too many acronyms. RFQ is not constrain it to a single path and leave the options open to creative thinking from the outside world in terms of, okay, so they can come in with different ways of designing, building, and operating it, where maybe there's a public-private partnership element to it, or public on one part, private on the other, or different combinations. So we didn't want to restrict it and let people be creative and see if anybody wanted to come in and, you know, you've got design-build-and-operate sort of three elements, well, I want to participate, maybe an entity only participates in two of those elements and not all three, or maybe one of the three or all three. And so just leaving it open to make it flexible. It was a tough wordsmithing project to try and convey that in a sentence or two.
So I guess my last question is, is during this whole process of the RFQ, will there be further vetting of the financial feasibility that might not require a $50,000 feasibility study another year from now, or whenever this process goes through?
Yeah, the RFQ requirements require, similar to an RFP, but it's not project-specific, it's just to develop a short list of entities that are qualified, willing, and able to participate in a future RFP process. So yes, we will be looking at financial and other organizational and characteristics of whatever those entities are.
Thank you.
I'd add, one of the reasons, please, the Harbor Advisory Board recommended the RFQ process is then we'll have private folks, private developers, paying for the feasibility study, because they're going to determine if it's feasible or not, likely.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Okay, Matt?
You know, go ahead and let's finish up here first. We might be able to get some of those.
All right, so that's a possible comment later. I think looking at the totality of this RFQ is one small piece, and so I don't necessarily have a question for Eric, but however, looking at the totality of from measure D to a working waterfront, to understanding the various commentary made during public comments, this is one way that we can kind of complete the circle of what we need to have a functional working waterfront from a number of standpoints, from head of household jobs to just taking the environmentally responsible step necessary to protect the estuary and bay. So with that, Eric, the one comment I have, because I like, I appreciate how you explain and answer, because John, your questions are spot on, but I like the way that you're covering it, Eric, in terms of talking about the RFQ, looking down the road, maybe we can save some money and expedite the process a bit with that. But with that, I think doing this, in terms of, this has been a good 20 years that we've been working on this concept of a boatyard, the different manifestations along the waterfront.
On and off?
On and off, yes. And, but however, perhaps we can, you know, with a strike while iron's hot.
Red?
Eric, in designing the layout of the parking lot, did you coordinate with the Maritime Museum folks to be sure that this fits their needs?
Yes, absolutely. They were part and parcel to that design. In fact, they have their preliminary designs for their sort of mini-museum process that's going on now, that was melded in, and in their future, once they build out to full size. And again, I'll reiterate that this is just a concept of that it can fit in, it's not where the final placement of all the elements would be.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, everyone. I just want to make a couple of comments real quickly. So, great questions from everyone. You know, process-wise, the Harbor Advisory Board took this, the board itself took this marine facilities topic on as an objective. There have been some work, Councilmember Heding spoke of, you know, a couple items, everybody's touched on it. They worked through that, the 11-month timeline. Granted, you know, could we have accelerated that or worked it out? We allowed, you know, our Harbor Advisory Board and their ad hoc community to work through that, and they made the call, hey, at this point, let's do the RFQ. We received a letter from the chairman, which is the process from our advisory boards and the recommendation. Process-wise and per advisory board policies, typically it would have been Matt that might have agendized that and said, hey, let's discuss this. I sense there's, there has been an sense of urgency, even though it's been 20 years on and off, to move this along. So I took the prerogative to move this to consent, instead of, you know, having our liaison agendize that, as, you know, in an effort to help facilitate moving this along, understanding that it might have been pulled. You typically will get, you know, more robust discussion if it was a business item, so I didn't want to short sight anybody's discussion by any means, but I was trying to facilitate moving this along a little bit quicker. You know, I contacted Matt, emailed him, told him I was going to, you know, put this on consent. So as far as the liaison, how to handle, you know, agendizing a recommendation from one of our advisory boards. So process-wise, I just wanted to explain that. I appreciated the Harbor Advisory Board's work on this, I know they've been working hard on it. 11 months, six months, however it was, you know, I trust you guys were doing your due diligence at the pace at which you felt it was prudent to get there. So I appreciate the recommendation and supportive of moving this forward. You know, I know Dana, you're kind of anxious to come up, but I think there's sense to go ahead and move this along, and I'd kind of like to do that. So unless there's any other discussion on this, we can have discussion and then take a motion.
I just want to thank the Harbor Advisory Board, as well as the subcommittee and staff for all of the work that you have done over the years, and also
for all of the work that you have done over the years and also recently in putting this together. I do support it. I'm really concerned about the financial feasibility, as I've always stated upfront. And I'd like to get this moving and come to a decision as soon as possible, as I'm sure everybody would. And so I do support it, and thank you, Matt, for being the liaison and clarifying some of those issues. Thanks.
Yeah, no, I also support it. I think it's the way to go. It makes a lot of sense to me, the way you want to proceed, and I think first finding qualified people and having them do some of that financial feasibility analysis is an excellent idea. So I fully support it.
Thanks, Matt. Brad?
Yeah, this is exactly the kind of activity that we like to receive from our advisory boards, and we really appreciate the work that you guys did on this, and I fully support it as well.
Great, thanks. I'll take a motion to approve item A6.
And so moved.
Second? Great, Matt. Motion by Matt and second by Mr. Heading. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thanks very much. And that moves us on to our next item, is item B1. It's a hearing item. Anybody need to take a five-minute recess? So we'll take a five-minute recess, maybe a few minutes more, and then we'll come back at about 7:15 or so. Thank you.
Okay, and just to let you know, I took it to school and it was all right, and here I'm dealing with-
Typically, they are requesting that the requirement currently states that any changes to the sign copy be required to have Planning Commission review as opposed to a staff-level review. It's important to note that the pole sign itself was originally permitted in 1973. It was permitted again in 1993 with the conditional use permit process. And both of these approvals predate the waterfront master plan, which was adopted by the city in 1997. Planning Commission, although not initially in favor of the pole sign, did ultimately recognize the legal non-conforming nature of the pole sign, and both our current sign ordinance and the sign ordinance that was in effect at the time of the 1993 approval has and had provisions for non-conforming signs. In addition, Planning Commission, as staff notes in the staff report, Planning Commission is within its authority to review future sign changes under the plan development overlay requirement, and so therefore, staff is recommending that this condition remain as is and as recommended. And then the second item on the screen is the request by the applicant's representative to modify Planning Commission Condition 18 regarding vertical access. And this was an item that was discussed at length by the Planning Commission. And the issue is, is there are three existing parking spaces on the premises. The vertical access along the -- that is proposed to be installed along the south side of the building will run parallel with one of the parking spaces there. It will be narrow. As part of the project, the applicant, when they put in the vertical access, it will cause the existing three parking spaces to be restriped and shifted to the north. And the applicant's parking exception request that's before you tonight also includes a request to have substandard width in terms of the parking dimensions. Whereas normally, the parking width would be required to be nine feet, they are requesting that, as discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, that that be dropped down to eight feet point six seven. So the applicant's requesting that due to that tightness of that parking configuration, that that would cause some frustration for drivers. Staff's position is that in order to maintain maximum public coastal access, staff is recommending that the condition remain as is. And Planning Commission found in their review and deliberation that it would be more important to have this vertical access than to have the parking spaces be changed. In addition, the -- normally, the requirement for a vertical access in this area would be 30% on a lease site of this width. And so in this case, we have a situation where the building is essentially non-conforming. The two-story building, approved today, the 30% view corridor requirement would be over 17 feet. With a four-foot vertical access corridor and the width from the south side of the building to the lease boundary line is a distance of eight feet. So they are at approximately 14%. And Planning Commission's view was that it was going to be tight to have the vertical access. This was the maximum amount of vertical access they could provide without any type of demolition of the building. And so feasibly, that's where the condition came from, is to provide for this bollard, to ensure that there's no public access into this area and no vehicle encroachments. In regards to the parking exception request before you, as I stated earlier, the project includes restriping of these three parking spaces as a result of the vertical access improvements. And this was one of the things that was discussed when the Planning Commission continued the meeting from December to January, and whether it was possible to provide three standard parking spaces. In meeting with staff onsite, the architect was able to demonstrate the total width available, which was 26 feet. The standard parking requirement would be nine by 20, which leaves them one foot short. The applicants requested relaxation of parking standards based on the plan development overlay requirement in our code, which allows for relaxation of standards based upon a finding of significant public benefit. And it was the Planning Commission's view that, in this case, a finding of significant public benefit could not be made based on the fact that the applicant was not even meeting the minimum code requirement, which is that 30% view corridor requirement that I just explained. So in short, the Planning Commission recommended that, in lieu of approving it with a substandard parking arrangement and cognizant of the desire to maintain the three parking spaces for the three-unit motel, the applicants included condition -- excuse me, the Planning Commission included the condition for the City Council to approve a parking exception. And that is where we are today with that review. So as I stated, the Planning Commission reviewed this project both at the December 20th meeting and the January 17th meeting. They reviewed it as both a concept and precise plan approval of the conditional use permit request. This would be the last discretionary land use entitlement process, should the council decide to approve this request as concept and precise plan approval. And the reason being is that due to the small scope of the project. If the council were to approve this request, the applicant's next step would be to obtain a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission, who has a permit issuance authority for coastal development permits in this area. And therefore, staff recommends conditional approval of the project via council adoption of Resolution 0517. And I'm available to answer any questions if you have any. And I would also like to point out that I do have all of the slides from both Planning Commission meetings. If there is a desire by the council to see additional, either visual simulations or any of the photos, and then the color boards that the Planning Commission looked at in hard copy are on the dais before you, as well as there are photo slides of that as well.
Okay. So we will open up for questions. We also have the applicant's representative here for presentation as well. So we have, you know, options. We can go through the questions now, or have the applicant come up and do their presentation, and then just conclude, go ahead with questions, you know, one set of questions afterwards, which would be the preference. Any comments from council on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Kathy, I understand representative, if you want to come up. Dana will set the clock for 10 minutes, and we'll welcome, and we'll go through presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mayor. I am some council members. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here tonight representing the applicants for the Grays Inn project. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff and the Planning Commission for their time and assistance with this project and their recommendation for approval. For my presentation this evening, I would like to provide you with some background information, project component highlights, and two condition concerns. Todd and Tamara Bastin purchased this lease site from the Grays a couple of years ago, and prior to that time, they provided a proposal to the council for a redevelopment project in exchange for the lease purchase and a new lease. The proposal to the council consisted of providing an eight-foot street-side sidewalk, a harbor walk on the water side connecting the salt building on the north and kayak horizons on the south, enhancing the view corridor between Grays Inn and kayak horizons, maintenance of the existing slips, and additional ADA compliance on the site. In keeping with the original concept, this proposed project includes a new harbor walk with connections to the adjacent lease sites, widening of the embankadaro sidewalk, and improved vertical access to the harbor walk, and new and repaired pilings and building facade improvements. Overall, the project is very unique in that it is a public benefit project because it does not request any additions or increases to use to the existing hotel or retail spaces. In designing this project, we felt it was important to include all the items in the project description to let the council know what was planned overall as a courtesy. Normally, other facility improvements to repair stairs, the deck, the roof, facade, and pilings would not require a hearing for a conditional use permit, but would rather be a building permit for repair work. Next, there's a few project components that I would like to highlight for you. First, staff has noted the new harbor walk will be 10 feet wide with the exception with the existing -- where the existing gangway is located. In the small area, the harbor walk will be eight feet wide to accommodate the gangway. We've spent considerable amount of time with staff discussing the reduction and the problems associated with relocating or revising the gangway in order to provide a 10-foot harbor walk, walkway for the harbor walk there. Both staff and the Planning Commission understand the difficulties in modifying, and they are supportive of keeping the configuration in its present form. I won't go into any further details, but if the council would like more background information on this, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. One other item I would like to point out is that the seven-foot by 11-foot extension to the harbor walk on the north side. When the salt building was constructed, an ADA lift was installed for access. The ADA lift cannot be relocated, so the proposed Grays Inn harbor walk will extend to the west and to the north to provide a clear path around the lift. Furthermore, when the salt building harbor walk was built, it was approximately two feet short of the lease line, so this project will fill in the gap on the neighboring lease site in order to make this connection. Next, the project incorporates an enhanced vertical access from the embankadaro to the harbor walk. This area will be reconstructed with a ramp to provide ADA access as well as opening the visual corridor by removing the existing shed and redesigning the landscaping that blocks the view currently. For a little bit more background information, I would like to mention that this project was approved in 1993 prior to the waterfront master plan. At the time, this project was approved with the shed, the landscaping, the fence within the area, what would normally have been a view corridor under the current regulations. Since this is not a new project, we cannot simply change things around to get the approximate 17 feet of corridor width required under the waterfront master plan, so we have tried to incorporate as many feasible options that we can. As presented, this project will replace the chain link fence with a wood fence that is like the existing fence around the outdoor decks and will be installed in the same location as the existing fence. The new fence will not exceed 30 inches high along the side of the building. However, at a point nearly even with the rear of the building, the fence height will increase to 42 inches. This is necessary because of the building code to protect folks from the drop-off at the deck grade to the sloping access or rampway next to it. The replacement fence is important and will provide us some separation and protection for the hotel room that has a window facing the vertical access pathway, as well as being helpful to guide the public to the harbor walk and not to the outdoor decks and the hotel rooms. A couple of other important notes on the view corridor I would like to mention is that landscaping will be kept to a height of 30 inches, and the plastic storage shed along the building will be removed. Next, the project, as proposed, will be done in three phases. The first phase will widen the sidewalk and restripe the parking lot. The second phase will construct the harbor walk and repair the piles. And the third phase will be to do the repair on the facade, the deck, the roof, and all the other repairs that needed to be around the site. Last, on the project highlights, I will just say that since this is a combined concept and precise plan approval, a comprehensive sign program, material and color board, and other project details have been included at this time. Now that I've covered the background and proposed project, I'd like to specifically discuss two conditions of approval that were added by the Planning Commission. As a side note, the applicant is supportive of all the other conditions as proposed, for the proposed modifications as recommended by the commission. First, Condition Number 17 was added by the Planning Commission that requires any copy or signed design changes previously approved pole sign must be approved by the Planning Commission. We can certainly understand the commission's concern for major changes to design and color and their need for review for consistency with the guidelines. However, we believe that this is an onerous condition in the event of a minor change such as the name of the hotel. Therefore, we would like to respectfully request a modification to the condition that would allow for a minor change to be approved administratively. I would also like to add that the pole sign is historic and an iconic sign that is associated with this hotel and has been for years. Keeping the sign in its current design is important to the Bastins. I also understand that the folks stop by on a regular basis to take pictures of it, so it's a very popular attraction. Second, Condition Number 18 requires a bollard or other suitable feature to be installed on the corner of the vertical access way in the parking lot. We understand the concept of trying to prevent vehicles from encroaching into the access way, but we believe this may be a little bit more problematic and may not completely address the issue that is intended to solve. The following points are things that I would like the council to consider. One, placing the bollard at the corner of the parking lot will restrict the turning movements of cars in and out of the last parking space. We think this will lead to frustration and the possibility of cars accidentally hitting the bollard. And for those of you who've been around for a while, you can see the one that happened at the post office. Second, one bollard in the corner will not prevent cars from parking over the edge of the access way toward the hotel. Three, multiple bollards will restrict ingress and egress from the cars in the spaces. And four, a raised or fenced access way will be a trip and safety hazard as well as restrict the ingress and egress to the cars. With that said, we would like to ask for a modification to this condition to help solve the problem and work towards a compromise. The hotel owners are fully aware of the need to keep the access way open at all times and are willing to self-police the parking area and inform their guests at the check-in of the time, at the time of the check-in, of the importance of keeping the access way clear. So we would like to present a modified condition as follows. The hotel guests shall be informed of the importance of maintaining a clear access along the pathway, and there shall not be any vehicle encroachment in this area at any time. If there are repeated encroachments by hotel guests in the access way documented by the community development department, the city shall notify the owners and require installation of the bollard or other suitable feature. The type, location, and method of delineation shall be submitted to the community development department for review and approval. That's also included in my letter, which is in your staff report, and I do have that condition up on here. I'll put it on the screen when I get finished. In conclusion, this project will provide another segment to the city's long-term goal in having a bay-si-lateral walkway as well as other public benefits to the lease site. The Bastins have been working hard to carry on the tradition of a unique and comfortable Grays Inn that so many visitors have enjoyed over the years. This project is not asking for any special considerations other than the parking exception that the Planning Commission felt was necessary for the parking space width. While we believe there are enough public benefits to allow for deviation to standards under the PD overlay, we are not going to cloud the picture with this discussion. All in all, this project, proposed project, will be an asset to the city pedestrian circulation around the embankadaro and the Bay Area. On behalf of the Bastins, we would like to respectfully ask the council's approval of the project as I presented tonight. That concludes my main presentation. I just want to say that the project architect is here tonight. He's got some things that he'd like to mention to you. We became aware of a little issue this afternoon regarding the sidewalk and the driveway approach and things, so we've created a graphic on short-term notice for you. But I just want to let you know that the architect has met with the building department prior to drawing the plans to make sure that he could meet the ADA standards. Typically, this level of detail would not be done at this point in time. It would be done at a building permit stage, and the architect would be going in, talking to the building inspector. So we do have a little bit of a graphic, and we can put that up on the screen, and you can ask the architect any technical questions with that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have tonight, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Kathy. I think when we get going into questions, we'll go back and forth and see how we want to do that. Jean, you want to address a couple of things?
Sure.
The clock's ticking, and then we'll go into questions.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Could you already go 10 minutes?
Architect for the project.
Okay.
If you can put that other plant, plan back up there to help. This plan, this project, it's been through the planning department for a concept and precise plan. Now it will eventually go to the building department for their review. I have sat down with Carl Longwick, Long, the building inspector, and we've reviewed some of the concerns dealing with the sidewalk ADA compliance, and we've come up with several options there. We will probably have to, and I've got this really cool thing here, so I'm still happy. So we'll have to raise the sidewalk at this particular point right here, from six inches to eight inches, to be able to get the slope up into the building. And then we'll, there are some options right there. And as far as a handicap walkway around the driveway approach, here is the existing location of the pole right there. We can bring the four-foot walkway across there and back this way. So we are, are in compliance with all the ADA requirements, and I apologize for this late engineering drawing here. I didn't know that it was required for the concept plan. But like I said, I've talked with Carl, and we've come up with solutions. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, just be ready. I think we'll have some questions as we go through this, but I think we'll go through that. Thanks. Thanks, Jean. So we'll open up for questions. I just want to, I'll start with a couple of questions, and then turn it to my right, and maybe Marla, so you can start us off as well. I guess my first couple of questions on the concept versus precise, and this is for Cindy or Scott. Having been on Planning Commission and gone through concept precise plans, having talked, and thanks for meeting with me today out at the job site, we went out there and looked at that, and I had some questions on elevations, which Jean brought up as well. That said, the precise plan, concept plan submittal, considering what we're looking here, no, it's not a ground-up project, but, you know, I had some questions on level of detail that delineate the very things that were, that sidewalk that Jean was just talking about. So can you explain to me the typical concept plan submittal versus a precise plan submittal as we're looking at these plans that are submitted to us?
So normally, what would happen with the plan development overlay is the concept plan approval, like the name implies, it's, you know, conceptual, it's approval by Planning Commission. They forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council. Normally, what we see on the embankadaro is it goes, after City Council goes up to the Coastal Commission, and about a year later, they come back with a precise plan approval. And so at the precise plan, we're seeing essentially the bells and whistles and those precise details. There have been, on rare occasions, projects in the city where the scope of work was small enough and the plans were developed to a level of detail where, based on what they were doing, it could, it was requested to be approved as a concept precise approval.
Yeah.
The danger is, is that if the Coastal Commission were to make significant changes to the project, they'd have to come back and amend the CUP. And the applicant's aware of that.
So by approving a concept and precise tonight, going to coastal, any significant changes would come back to the council anyway? Okay? And if it were going, if it were approved concept, then went up to coastal for approval, then it would become, it would come back as a precise from any input, and then we would see that at that point? And then all the questions that we may have and those details would be in that precise plan?
That's right. With the difference that precise plan approvals are only looked at by Planning Commission. City Council only looks at concept approvals.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Good. And then can you comment about the public benefit, public benefit project? So I think Planning Commission made some determination on what was public benefit versus requirement, as an example, the harbor walk. We claim that that's a public benefit, but that's a part of developing the lease site. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So Planning Commission essentially said significant public benefit or greater than normal, as it's described in the waterfront master plan, means going beyond the code requirement. And so they were very, in fact, our chairperson was very vocal about, we cannot relaxation develop, we cannot relax development standards where you're not even meeting the code requirement, which would be, say, for example, the 10-foot lateral access. So they would want to see something above and beyond.
Those are all my questions for now. Just turn it to Marla, so she can start off with questions as well.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on, actually, this process of going next to the Coastal Commission. And just out of curiosity, has there been any communication either with, by you or the applicant with the Coastal Commission, so you have some sense of where they're, where they're coming down on this project?
Yes. So as is custom with any project, where we think there'll be either a waterfront project where Coastal Commission is involved, or even if it's not in their jurisdiction, but we think that there'll be a high level of interest, we reach out to them on a regular basis. For this particular project, when the application first came in, we were most interested in their take on eelgrass protection versus lateral access. As the applicant noted in her public comments, there is a small section of the lateral access that will narrow down to eight feet by the gangway. And reached out to Coastal Commission staff two to three times to say, what do you think about this? Should they bump that out? Did a lot of back and forth, emailed them plans, they looked at it. And then in addition, most recently, you know, got additional emails from them. Can I get links to the Planning Commission staff report? So, I mean, it's, the level of communication is akin to working with a coworker. It's that great.
Okay. But you haven't gotten a sense of where they're, what their concerns are, or are they concerned about some of the things that really don't meet their requirements?
They were supportive. A little bit, initially, they said that the area of the lateral access where it narrowed from 10 to eight feet, they said, that's, we're talking a two-by-four area. That's so small, we probably wouldn't have too much of an issue with that. When it comes to situations, and the councils looked at other projects where there's eelgrass, the feedback they gave us right now is that right now, the commission is more interested in preserving and enhancing coastal access and requiring applicants to do eelgrass mitigation as opposed to the reverse, which is, no, we want you to avoid eelgrass, and we'd be willing to accept less coastal access. So that was great feedback for staff because it gives us that direction to give to the applicants, because that can be an expensive proposition to know that you're either going to have eelgrass mitigation or not. And then as far as the other improvements, like the facade improvements in the sidewalks, they didn't weigh in on that at all. It was mostly, can the dock system be, you know, redone? And walking them through that.
And I noted in the staff report that the kayak horizons lease site is also coming up soon. So this project would just go up to that line, and then any further extension of the harbor walk would be when the next one comes up.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then I'm just curious why the applicant considered it onerous, actually, to go before the Planning Commission if they wanted to change the sign? Maybe they could answer that.
Yeah, I think I would defer to them for that answer.
Okay.
The cost of amending a permit and the time and everything going to the Planning Commission and doing a hearing, maybe for, you know, being there two or three hours for just like a name change, that's why I was just asking for a minor to be approved by staff, major by Planning Commission.
So it could be modified so that we could be more precise in the kinds of changes that could be made administratively versus Planning Commission?
Absolutely. That's what we were asking for.
And with respect to the bollards, exactly where were they going to be placed?
It was going to be at the corner of the sidewalk and the vertical access way. So right there at the, more toward the embankadaro side, if you try to push the bollard down toward the hotel further, then you're going to run into problems with car doors opening into the bollard. So the Planning Commission said right in that corner.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I would also note that for the bollard standpoint, the concern about hitting it, it's staff's intent to make that a soft bollard, not one that's hardened. That wouldn't make any sense. Cars would hit it. So we want something that would be, that would be able to bend and move, you know, so you wouldn't be damaging vehicles driving in and out.
Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Cindy, for your time report, and thank you to the applicant for your presentation. I appreciate it. Just a couple of quick questions regarding the request by the applicant for Condition 17 changes. Is there any precedent for making a minor versus major changes to signage that we can cite or that we know of, where one, being a minor, would go through administratively, and/or two, it having major criteria that would have to come to the Planning Commission? Just curious about that and how that would look if...
Certainly. So typically, a sign permit in and of itself is an administrative approval. It doesn't require Planning Commission approval unless there's a sign exception. In this case, this is a lease site in a plan development overlay, and so as part of that Planning Commission level review, they included the sign level review in that conditional use permit approval, which does require Planning Commission approval. And in addition, the waterfront master plan discourages pole signs on the waterfront, and it's likely that our future sign ordinance, which is pending currently, will prohibit sign, pole signs in this area. So this was something that the Planning Commission wanted to make sure that they had control as part of their PD overlay authority to making sure that any future changes to the sign would be consistent with the intent and the direction that they were giving to staff and the applicant.
So this really was basically determined in terms of your support of what Planning Commission had recommended, had to do with what in the future may come out in terms of sign regulations, basically, and being consistent with that?
Yes, that's right.
Is that right?
Well, and with regard to the current policies in the waterfront master plan, which, again, discourage pole signs, the current policies right now would suggest that you not have them.
Is there any relevance to the historical value?
Is there any relevance to the historical value of that type of signage? I'm thinking of something like, you know, the Centennial Stairway has appeal because it has historical value. The applicant cites this historical issue with regard to the sign and the importance of that. What's your sense of that?
I mean, the sign's relatively old, but it's, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily consider it historic. We don't have it identified as such in any of our documents. It's a kind of standard can with sort of plastic inserts and then lighting behind it. So you find those pretty much everywhere from a style standpoint. I guess maybe how long it's had the name on it and the specific plastic inserts, I mean, maybe 30-something years?
Forty.
Was it 40? Okay, 40. So, I mean, I, I mean, it's been around for a long time, so historic in that sense, but I don't know that really historic, you know, it's not really all that unique.
Good, thanks. The other question I had with regard to parking, do you, and I do realize your response to the applicant's request, I've read that, but the issue of the possibility of the bollards interfering with parking and making it more difficult and increasing the likelihood of the possibility of either hitting a car or another car when parking because of those bollards, is that, do you not consider that a significant issue or an issue that's of concern?
In looking at it, one of the reasons, one of the concerns is putting something at the end of the parking space that you could hit with a car, you know, we want, well, damaging their vehicles, and so hence the idea that we'd come up with something that was, that was soft. So if you hit it, it would bend over and it wouldn't damage your vehicle. Other than that, though, I mean, if you come out straight where the bollard's going to be lined up with, you're going to be going off a curb. So I think most people would maneuver their car such that that doesn't happen, you're not, typically want to drive off a curb. So I think there's other things in play there, and where you're typically going to be going out of that is you're going to be swinging around and then traveling in a north direction for the most part. If you wanted to go south, you're going to end up in the parking lot to Tyglens, and you'd probably just walk there from there. So I don't know that, you're going to get a lot of vehicle trips in that direction. So I don't know that it's all that big, that much of a concern.
Good, thank you. No further questions. Matt?
I do have a question, and Cindy, I don't know if you want to answer it or if we want to talk to the applicants, but the, either Kathy or Gene, but in terms of looking at the west side of the building in terms of the materials and eelgrass mitigation, I don't know if you, Cindy, do you want to explain that, or would you like the applicants? I'd like to see, because looking at the materials we're talking about for dock construction, and maybe we could explain that to let people know.
Sure. So I'll give it an attempt, and if the applicant wants to chime in, they can. As part of the planning review, the applicant submitted an eelgrass planning study prepared by Tenera. They've done a lot of work in this area. And then the applicant also consulted with contact staff at NOAA, which through National Marine Fisheries Services is responsible for implementing the California eelgrass mitigation policy. And essentially, what this Tenera eelgrass planning survey showed is that the level of impact would be insignificant, and it wasn't something that would rise to a significant impact. And if I recall correctly, the, there are two eelgrass patches near the, both the north side of the dock system and the south, and the area on the north side of the dock system where there would be a new pile installed to support the extension of the Harbor Walk, the habitat area is .01 square meters. Essentially, it's three blades of eelgrass. And so it wasn't something that staff felt triggered a significant impact under a SEQA review, but that was looked at in the original Planning Commission staff report, and we will want to see, and this is reflected in the conditions of approval, that additional follow-up studies be done, and that for purposes of noise mitigation and noise monitoring, that there'd be marine mammal plan, contingency plan put into place.
Okay. And so looking at the walkway down below and then the docks, I mean, they would be new construction, so we're not talking about adding any sort of dock space, no?
No, the dock system itself would change. Literally, it would just be the Harbor Walk. The gangway will get a little bit steeper because the new Harbor Walk, when it comes in, it'll rise in elevation about 18 inches, so it's, connects with the salt building. And then the three, I think, three or four piles that were noted as being repaired, those are existing piles. And then the one pile at the north end to support where the Harbor Walk will need to jut out to wrap around the elevator lift that's on the salt building, the site.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Maybe I could be helpful too, just a little bit for knowledge. Most of the Harbor Walk is over the rock revetment, so there's no requirement for any kind of fiberglass grating. The outer approximately two feet in width of the Harbor Walk for the entire north and south run will be the fiberglass grating, so that if there is any eelgrass that does grow down close to the revetment edge, there will be that, the transparent light penetration for that. And then the section, the seven-by-11-foot section that I mentioned, that's connecting to the salt building is also going to be the fiberglass grating. We don't need to make any changes to the gangway because the existing gangway that's solid and under the National Marine Fisheries policy, the new policy that they have, if it's existing and it's shaded, it's a permanent shading now, then there's no future requirements. Same thing with the docks. So we just will be looking, be careful with the piling that we're going to be installing on the north end, which will be toward the salt building, because we have to have that piling there to be able to run the beams back to support the Harbor Walk. So, but we keep it solid, everything that's over the top of the rocks.
Thank you. Red?
The viewing area between the kayak Horizons and the Graves End is already substandard for the width of the lot. And I noticed that when a vehicle parks in that southernmost parking space, that's going to block more than half of what's substandard view we have there already. Was there any consideration given to reducing the number of parking spaces to two so that we could maximize the available viewing area?
That was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. What the Planning Commission decided is that, recognizing that the applicant has a three-unit motel, there's three existing parking spaces on the premises, and in addition, they've paid, previously paid parking in lieu through past CUPs, essentially eliminating one of those parking spaces, you know, was not pursued by Planning Commission.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Okay. With that, I don't have any speaker slips for this item, so I don't have any public comment. We can go into discussion at this point, and I'll lead off with some discussion and go from there. First, I have one more question for Scott and Cindy before we get going, and that was, so I was thinking about the Off the Hook lease site and Caldwell's lease site. So can you explain to me on those particular sites, Off the Hook? So that's a project that would be non-conforming right now, both in view corridor and those types of things. Is that, would that be accurate?
Off the Hook might actually, no, well, it's got stuff down at the end. So if you were, it probably would comply all the way up until you got to the back where there's some seating area.
Yeah.
And that portion of it makes it non-compliant. It probably has the required corridor right up until you get to that seating area, and that stuff's in the way, so that wouldn't comply.
So there's non-conforming issues on both of those lease sites?
Yeah, correct. And Libertine doesn't comply.
Right. And so right now, both of those are up for proposals to demo and rebuild, and that would, I know we're going to be hearing some different things, but those proposals wouldn't enlarge, meet all, be conforming to all the new requirements. Is that correct?
As they would come forward, yes.
Yeah.
That would be the idea. The council's issued consent of landowner on Libertine, and then obviously, we're in the second iteration of the RFP process, and those letters have gone out, and so we'll be coming back to staff with redesigned projects in March, within an anticipated council date in April to return to council.
Okay. All right, thanks. I'll just start off with some discussion points. Yeah, I want to appreciate, make mention to Planning Commission for their work on this. I know they work diligently and staff and everybody and the applicants as well. My comments are, I wrote down some notes on this. The whole goal of the waterfront master plan, it was great that we made that investment and, one, to meet the coastal act, but we understood the importance of the waterfront. So we committed to that with the waterfront master plan. The Harbor Walk was a component to that, and, you know, the other part of that is just access in general, lateral access, the sidewalk enhancement part of that. And so this, this particular project proposal, being a non-conforming site, it's great to be able to hang on to some of the boutique type of facilities on the waterfront. Totally appreciate that. I guess what my thoughts are on this, as this is our opportunity to discuss continuing that waterfront master plan, the whole, the goal behind that. And when I look up at the sidewalk and I look as far as through the salt building and then Smith Hells Building, all those improvements on the sidewalks have been made into, you know, conforming. And then we get to the aquarium, which will be the next project that will meet all those conforming setbacks, the sidewalk dimensions and everything, and of course, the Harbor Walk will be part of that component as well. So I think it's very prudent that we look at this diligently, and so that's my eye as I look through that, but I think there's ways to get through everything, and I'll make my comments accordingly. But when I, some of the, the sidewalk issue, just on the street side of it, thanks for meaning, I know Gene was able to print up the copy and elevations. Still have my own concerns on whether or not all the elevations are going to be there, where the handicap ramp is going to meet in there and all those types of things. And, you know, higher level of detail, maybe we'd have that. Carl and myself, Gene, I know, could work through that. I guess the way I'm looking at this is, for one, I, you know, I appreciate the sign itself, you know, the historic relevance, you know, the Graves End and the artist himself, you know, has some relevance in the community. I don't see the relevance in maintaining the pole. In fact, you know, it's a non-conforming, as we go into a, you know, piece like this, we want to be able to see, you know, 10, 20 years from now, that we've adhered to that waterfront master plan, and we've made continuity all the way through. So as all the other projects, the next one will be, the kayak Horizon will be done, and then the aquarium. So I want to ensure that everything in between kind of meets all those elements. So I have concern that, you know, making the exception for the parking, and by maintaining the pole there and the sign, I just have concern with that and making that fit. And I don't think if we're going to be, if we're looking at this project to last, you know, the next 20, 30 years, that a pole sign is the appropriate measure to make an exception for. You know, I think the sign, there's plenty of room on the building to take the sign and mount the building, the sign on the building and still maintain the presence of the sign itself, and eliminating the pole and having the appropriate handicap access. And, you know, I had the discussions as far as how an apron handicap access way would be constructed to make this happen. So for me, by eliminating that, the pole sign, you'll be able to enhance that and not have to worry about the four-foot lateral access and a bollard there, because then you're going to have three parking spots that, you know, meet the full width. So I'm, you can tell where I'm going on this, as far as making the exception for the one parking stall just because the sign is there. So, you know, I appreciated the discussion from Planning Commission, and I understand, you know, our chairperson, Taft, was, you know, apprehensive about the pole sign as well, but I, I think overall for the project, you can still retain the sign itself and mount it on the building and honor the waterfront master plan and the access along the sidewalk and the Harbor Walk itself. So, you know, I would be, you know, of course, willing to support the project, but not with the pole sign and the exception that is required for an eight-foot parking stall. So I would be supporting a project by eliminating the pole sign and, you know, just go ahead and using the three nine-foot parking spots. And I think, those are my comments for right now, and I'll just wait to see how the rest of council goes on this discussion, and then we'll go from there. Marla?
Well, I'm curious to know what the applicant would say to that recommendation.
Well, I think we can have our discussion and we can work on that, you know, yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, and I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that we do want to try to hold to the standards that we're setting and think about the future of where we're going. But I do appreciate the effort of this applicant to extend the Harbor Walk and to be sensitive. And so truthfully, if the sign is that important to them, I'd be willing to say it would be all right. But that's why I'm curious to know.
Yeah.
How they feel about that. If that's really a deal breaker for them, that this is so important to them, that they don't want to move forward without that, that would change it for me.
Okay. John? So, again, thank you all, and I echo your comments about Planning Commission and the time and effort that they put into it. I would agree with the, what the mayor has said regarding the pole issue. I understand the applicant's issue, really is cost. I get that, and it's expensive to have to come back and go through a process like that. But at the same time, I think we, we try to, we've tried to mitigate what really is, in my mind, a major concession, which is the 30% view corridor by allowing just a 14% view corridor. And I know that coastal is just echoing at everything that I see, the coastal access issue and increasing coastal access. And so, so if we've made that concession, which is significant, I don't feel that, given the explanation about the pole having any historical real value, also that the sign could be maintained and utilized, but that the pole could be not utilized, should not be utilized. Secondarily, I too have parked in some of those spaces down there and agree with the nine-foot parking space issue. It's just an issue for me. And as we age, it's more difficult to get into sites that are smaller, and so I would concur with your comments regarding that. Matt?
Well, in terms of discussing the project, I think in terms of the one, the big elephant in the room is improving the coastal access here, understanding that the lateral access is not up to standard, but however, we will be opening up part of the coastal access that people have never had. So looking at it, looking at the improvements made with that, and then understanding how they're going to tie to the salt building, and then given the eight-foot sidewalk in front. Now, in terms of the sign, I understand the point being made, but however, I'm wondering how big of an issue it is for it to stay. Okay? Now somehow, maybe the applicants, after this is done, they can comment about, you know, why or why not. But I think the improvements, right now, looking at the improvements on both sides, on the east and west side, including the lateral access, I think that this has a lot going for it. And so, I mean, unless there's, the sign is a deal breaker, I, you know, I'd like to see if we can find another happy medium here.
Red?
I agree with the mayor about the sign for several reasons. One is if the sign is non-conforming with our new sign ordinance, I think that it should be brought into compliance with the, with the sign ordinance. Second is that removal of the sign would allow us to maintain the nine-foot wide parking spaces that the applicant has asked for, and it would also negate the requirement for a bollard, which, again, would be another unsightly piece of architecture in that view corridor. unsightly piece of architecture in that view corridor. So I would go ahead with that.
Okay. With that, we've, we're kind of working towards one thing and then, you know, we can invite the applicant. I think, I just want to respond a little bit. So I don't take the, you know, this lightly on, you know, making different requirements, but having gone through some of the other waterfront projects and looking at this project, we've had, every lease site that we've negotiated for, we've negotiated with has, there's a, the expense and investment that goes along with that improvement is commensurate to the lease, the time that goes through that. So I don't think we're asking for anything above and beyond. And you know, when you compare that to the other ones, I, you know, we can ask, invite the applicant up, of course, but you know, from a deal breaker standpoint, I think we need to be adhering to that, the waterfront master plan as much as we can, considering a lot of the non-conforming issues and concessions that have been made on this. I think it's minor in scope and considering they're really able to maintain just the presence of the building in its shape and form that it is, the minor, the minor improvements to the sidewalk and, you know, the driveway issue and the sign is really minor in detail considering the overall, when I look at some of the larger projects, specifically the Smith Hill project next to the salt building, that's a major investment, which all, you know, all the items and Ts were crossed and dots were, were put on, put in place. So those are my comments there. And I guess we can, you know, invite, you know, the representative or applicant up to discuss any of this.
Sure, happy to. Just for a little bit of background information, the salt building next door was conditioned by the coastal commission to keep their pole sign out in front because it was attached to that building and made that building. So just for precedence purposes. So we just had a little chat here to try to see if we can make it easy. What's important to them is the sign. Bob Gray was the one that designed the sign, you know. Bob's been a big figure in this town for a number of years. He was on the planning commission a long time ago. So the design of the sign is really important in keeping with the motel itself. So maybe upon compromise and maybe what you were mentioning at the beginning of moving it onto the building, if the council would be okay if it was mounted as a projection sign on the front of the building so that when you're coming down the street, you can see the sign from either side. We could actually keep that sign. I think we could, there's probably a way to figure out how you could mount that sign and put it on the front of the building as a projection style sign and be able to keep the sign. Then it makes the council happy, then we wouldn't have to have the parking exception, make the parking spaces wider. They're happy because they can keep the sign. And then look at the modifications as well as the condition from the planning commission about going back to the planning commission for any changes to the sign. If that, we want to modify that condition as well, so.
Just curious, so I know there's the interest in maintaining the historic value of the sign, but on the same hand, you're saying, you're also asking, well, if we want to change the sign, so if there's, if there's value in a historic part of the sign, yet you want to change it, so there's, there's confliction there I don't quite understand.
Oh, I'm just thinking about in the future, if for some reason something happens and they decide to change the, sell the motel, let's say, and somebody else comes in and says, you know, gee, I want to keep this sign design, the font and the rock and all of that kind of, keep that part of the sign, but just change the name from Gray's to Smith.
Yeah.
Do we need to go to the planning commission to get that done? If, if any kind of change to the color, the font style, the design, I can see the planning commission wanting to weigh in and making sure that that's compatible. And I don't have an issue with requiring somebody to go to the planning commission for that level of approval. We're just thinking if the Gray's comes off and Smith goes up and it's the same style and font that was there previously and colors, if that would be okay at staff level.
Sure.
So make that distinction.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Any, hey Gene, how's it going?
I'd like to get a couple of two cents worth in here. I was on the committee who created the waterfront master plan.
Thank you.
And that was for major development on the waterfront, major remodels on the waterfront. I do not feel as though this is a major development. We're not clearing the lot. I don't think that you can apply the 17% open space view corridor to this particular project. We're just adding on to the front side of the building and on the backside. We can make the eight-foot wide sidewalk and, in compliance, and provide the aisle for it. I just don't think that you guys need to apply the waterfront master plan guidelines to this particular project.
Thanks, Gene. I respect, you know, the work on the waterfront master plan and I know every project that comes before us, we're measured by how we do that, any planning commission, any, any council. So I appreciate. And I think we have done that. We've made, we've obviously said, hey, 17 isn't going to work and staff has come with recommendations. So I think the process is working appropriately. With that, any further discussion on the sign and some of the suggestions? I'll look for Scott and, you know, can you talk about the suggestion on the pole, the sign and, and what we're getting ourselves into there?
Certainly we can amend the conditions of approval to reflect the request if that's the desire of the council. It's not really complicated. I mean, we could make the language specific to, any other changes to the sign with the exception of the name would require planning commission review. I mean, we can add that language to it. That would work just fine and we would all know what we're doing. And anybody that read it in the future, when something like that came up, would look at it and say, oh, nope, they just want to change it to Smith. That's a change in the name, staff can approve that. Any other changes to the sign, that's not okay, you have to go back to planning commission. I don't think there's any issue from that standpoint if the council's interested in doing that, otherwise, condition is as proposed.
So when we were looking at that today, I mean, we discussed, you know, the kind of the projection type thing and whether or not it would meet our current sign ordinance, even doing that, because it would extend, you know, beyond whatever that would be. Can you talk to that and if, and how we would navigate through that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we have a sign exception process. It's approved through a conditional use permit, which is what's before you.
So we'd be, we'd be doing a sign exception here tonight?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, you could approve remounting the sign on the front of the building as a projecting sign. That would qualify from the exception standpoint.
Okay.
And with the direction from council, if you chose to do that, we could make that happen.
And so, just checking with you on making those types of exceptions, just, just want to feel for you on, you know, once we, we do those types of things, how we can support that with findings and, and, you know, what we're setting ourselves up for, precedents and things like that?
I mean, I take from the council that there's a potential desire to maintain the sign and that's what the applicants have requested. I think it's a, it's a nice compromise and I, I think that works fine. I don't think there's any really downside to them mounting the sign on the building that way. It maintains the sign, everybody's used to seeing the sign, it's been there for 40 years. So I don't, I don't think there's any issue with that. The fact that we have requirements to how far they can project out and this might not be completely consistent with that, but we do get to sort of maintain that historic feel that we were talking about, I think that probably outweighs the requirement as it sits there specifically.
Yeah, I think the one thing I'd be cautious about is as we get into other exceptions and, and that sign being utilized to justify the exception for another one. So in, in agreeing to doing something like that tonight, you know, I don't know how you, how you work through this, but I think to myself, well, this was done under the circumstance of some historic relevance, let's say, under these circumstances, not just because we thought, you know, projecting out six more inches or two more feet was okay, just because. So you know, how do you, how do you maintain some, some documentation with that?
I need to interject a question, a procedural question, because we're talking about a sign exception now.
Yes.
Is the sign exception, I'm asking actually Scott and Cindy, is the sign exception, if all that was happening was a sign exception, would that just be an administrative process or would that have to go to the planning commission and possibly the city council on appeal?
It requires, oops, sorry, it requires conditional use permit through, through planning commission typically.
So it's a separate process that would have, so my, my concern is that what was on the agenda was a parking exception and a CUP that didn't include the sign exception.
That's what you're saying.
So I'm, I think.
I get what you're going.
We may need to go through the process.
It was not noticed for that, you're correct. So yeah, you're absolutely correct. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Yeah, that's good.
So with that, I guess I would stick with my initial recommendation on not allowing the pole sign. And let's kind of wrap this up with where we want to go with it. I guess the initial thought was mounting the sign on the building, the applicant's requesting maybe doing perpendicular, which is outside the agendized item and we're not going to be able to discuss that any further according to what you're talking about because it wasn't noticed for that.
You're not, or what you could do is because you're not going to, if I'm understanding the commission, the council's direction, you're not willing to make the parking exception. And so because of that, because the planning commission conditioned their approval on a parking exception, you could not approve the parking exception, send it back to the planning commission. The planning commission could then, the applicant could then propose to the planning commission a sign exception. And then if they approve the sign exception and the parking being nine feet, it would then come back to you again for review.
Okay. Okay. I know it's a, a longer process that the applicants didn't want to necessarily go through. I'm, you know, I feel compelled to kind of stick with my thoughts on that and then I'll look for the rest of council to weigh in and see where we go. Marleus?
I would agree with that.
Okay. John?
Mr. Brownie, are you saying that, that if it were not hung as a, as the applicant described, but consistent with or the integrity of the building, that, that would be consistent with this process tonight? Or any change to the pole and removing that sign and moving it somewhere else would require that process?
As I understood it, to have a projecting sign, you would need a sign exception. If the sign's mounted on the wall, I'm not sure if you need a sign exception.
Well, it's the, it's the projection out, you can only, signs can only project, I think 18 inches off the face of the building, into the right of way, actually. And this, from looking at it, it appears that it would exceed that, hence the sign exception process. So that's kind of what we're coming at from that standpoint. But also note that the process that the planning commission went through was a recommendation to city council on this project.
But didn't they approve a resolution?
Didn't they approve the, they didn't approve the CUP? Isn't the process, CUP, concept plan?
CUP gets approved here.
So they forwarded a favorable recommendation that the council do X, Y, and Z. Council could choose not to accept all of those recommended, recommended items.
Yeah, that's, that was the point behind that.
Okay, then it sounds like we wouldn't need to go back to, you don't need to direct, to send it back to the planning commission, but you did need to then deny this request and the applicant then would have to come back to you with a sign exception, which, that doesn't have to go to the planning commission first?
That would go to the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay. Sign exceptions go to planning commission, not city council. Separate process.
So what I'm hearing is you could approve this process, approve it with nine-foot parking spaces, and then in order to meet that requirement, the applicant's going to have to go to the planning commission and ask for a sign exception to put the sign the way they want it.
Okay. So, so that, okay, so by, I'm going to repeat that, so approving the project with three parking spaces at nine feet, which means the pole sign would not be allowed, right?
Right, what, what would be happening is, I'm trying to do this on the come, is you could approve resolution 0517, but you wouldn't approve the parking exception findings. I'm trying to have the resolution approved tonight.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to do. So you wouldn't approve the parking exception finding, which is on page two and, it's on page two.
Page two, number 19?
No. Page two of the resolution, right?
So right on the bottom, Lori's done a great job in putting the numbers of our agendas, which I love, thank you. So you can go to those and get the right number.
57?
So 55, 57 of 246?
59.
Just a minute, please.
59 of 246.
Okay. So 59, so on.
So strike the paragraphs under parking exceptions, because you're not going to grant that.
On 59?
And then going to page 66 of 246, you would strike number 19. And you don't need to say they have to be nine feet because they have to be nine feet.
That, that's true.
Right.
So we're, so we're good there. One other option here is just to continue this item, we could renotice for the sign exception, it could be approved here. Yeah. As part of the project.
So it would certainly save time.
So bring, bring the item back with another.
Because, I mean, I'm sure the applicant's concern is the council's making the decision to get rid of the pole sign and then sending it back to the planning commission to have them deal with that.
Sure, and I get that. And I'm, I'm all in for trying to make this.
And we could come back and fix the resolution with the direction that you've given, so you have a resolution that has the changes that the city attorney was discussing. And then we could notice for that sign exception and bring that all back to you at one time.
Okay.
If you prefer. That might actually be cleaner.
I thought you said the sign exception has to go to the planning commission.
It can also be approved by city council under the plan development overlay too.
Okay.
So this is being continued, you're going to continue this, you're going to continue this to a no certain date. New public notice is going to go out. And what's going to be brought back to you is a resolution without the parking exception, without the parking exception findings, without the parking exception, and the item will include a sign exception. And that'll be designed and that resolution will be written to approve a sign exception and then you decide what you want to do.
Yes, and I would expect that with the sign, the sign exception and all that application, we would be seeing what we're approving and whether or not the sign is sticking out 10 feet or two feet. And your recommendation, I think, would be desired, you know, on that.
That is exactly what we will give you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, I would just make a motion to continue this item to a date uncertain with the, and come back with the sign exception and the resolution to reflect the parking except, to strike the parking exception and to make them to conform to the three nine-foot places. And I think in addition, with that, we wouldn't, the bollard wouldn't be required. So we could, I think there's, you know, consensus to do that. That would be the motion. Am I, do I have everything out there?
I think so.
Okay, so that's, that's the motion and then we need a second.
I second.
Okay, so we've got, so I'll give a second to the lady in red to the right. So the second was by Marleus. And thanks for working on this. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries 5-0. Thanks, appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is item C1. Barbara, thanks. Barbara, Dave and Cindy, thanks you guys for hanging around on this. We'll get on to item C1. Item C1 is adoption of resolution number 16, 0617, approving the fiscal year 2016-17 mid-year budget amendments and provide direction regarding recommendations from the citizen oversight committee. And it looks like Craig's getting set up on this.
Thanks, everybody.
May I say something? Yeah, while Craig's setting up, I just want to say thank you to Cindy in particular because all of the work and detail that went into this report is an example of what I thanked staff for at the beginning of the meeting. So, thank you. is an example of what I thanked staff for at the beginning of the meeting. So, thank you.
I feel like everyone got up and then left right before fun mid-year budget conversation.
No, we're here for you. We're here for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so Craig Smallinger with the finance department, thank you. The item before you is an overview of the mid-year budget performance. So that's the first six months of the fiscal year, starting July 1 through December 31st. We have attached to the staff report in attachment one, excuse me, are the general fund revenues and expenditures, and those have been captured by department. Where if you look at attachment two, those are the revenues and expenditures broken down by fund. And there's a little difference in there, we kind of had to chop up the general fund a little bit to make sure you saw the revenues and expenditures showing up in the same department so you can tie them off versus having them 20 or so pages down below. So it's just a little easier way to look at it, but that's why your, your pages look a little bit different there, so. An important note, when you look at your attachments, the left column on attachments one and two, adopted budget is what you all approved last June for the entire fiscal year for 1617. Column next to that labeled budget amendments is any kind of budget amendment that came forward, such as the end-of-year excess cash from fiscal year 1516 that was re-appropriated into the current fiscal year. Combine those two, you can get your next column labeled amended budget. Next to that is your year-to-date transactions, so that's that first six-month period we already talked about. Column next to that labeled budget minus year-to-date transactions. You would expect with straight-line accounting that potentially all expenditures and revenues would hit at roughly 50%. Obviously, that doesn't happen, and we're going to dive into a little more of those details on some of the bigger ticket items on here in a minute. And next to that is percentage used and received. As I mentioned, you'll see the percentage that is included on there, how much was either expended as an expenditure or received as a revenue. Otherwise, you're going to see three crosses on that because there wasn't a budgeted number on there. It's not a problem, just wasn't anticipated, or maybe we need to do some accounting cleanup on where those kind of hit. And then lastly is the prior year total, so that's the total budget on those account items for the entire fiscal year. So with that, looking at the general fund for the first six months, we're at 48% of revenue in the general fund. And that might look like a bit of a scary number at first, but on that bullet A there, there are a couple trailing indices, so we only have revenue for the first five months of the fiscal year that showed up. Couple examples of that are our transient occupancy tax, our 10% tax, our head and bed tax, and sales tax as well. So what we did is took a look at what we did the first five months of last year to give an indicator of kind of how we're trending going forward. So looking at that, we're up 6% on TOT and 30% on sales tax, feeling on page 12. That 30% is a bit of a misnomer. The reason for that is because last year we had an account number 3122, which was titled property tax in lieu of sales tax, which is part of the statewide triple flip that went into effect in 2004 where they kind of manipulated where funds came in and made some adjustments in there. So what happened with that is we had roughly $330,000 in revenue that we received as property tax in lieu of sales tax that got wiped out as a line item. And now the city receives that through sales tax. So that 30% inflator isn't a true 30% inflator. What that actually is, we're at 51% of total for the year because now we actually have the December figure. So it's still a good figure, but it's not 30% above, so apologies for the missing over there. Second one down, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. That's a figure that had not been received as of December 31st of last calendar year, so the first six months of the year. We had a budgeted amount of $853,000 in there. I have a call, I had a call-in with the state and the county, and that number had been confirmed at $972,000 for the year, so $119,000 over what we budgeted. And then in January, we received a half payment of that, so we received $486,000. So that's not included in the revenue figure. That gets us at the noted 6.349 million. Another note is the measure Q transfer. So in the budget for measure Q was $96,000 to pay for some fire department overtime costs that kind of get us to our four personnel per shift. So that transfer will happen in the tail end of the year. So we could possibly assume half of that, $48,000, the first part of the fiscal year, even though that transaction won't happen until the tail end of the fiscal year. The three other similar circumstances that, the natural gas franchise fees, we're going to get roughly $73,000 this year. That hasn't hit yet, so you could assume roughly half of that at $36,000. We have received three-quarters of our cable TV franchise fees, so that's $119,000 remaining, so we can assume another quarter of that at $39,000. And three-quarter of our rental income of $287,000 not, not received as of December 30th. But in January, we received another $93,000 payment. So even though it's not showing in this report, we actually did receive the money. Does that, does that make sense at all? Okay, great. And then as a whole, Scott's department's doing really well. Shout out to Scott at 60% of total revenue, which is permit revenue fee up. Chief Knuckles shop as well over in the fire department, their plan check revenues are up quite a bit as well. They're at roughly 87%, so indicators on the development front are looking good. All right, so as I mentioned, we can, we can safely assume that we can make some adjustments to that 48% revenue based on some of the highlights that I just mentioned a few minutes ago. So we've already received that $486,000, so half of the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees that the state confirmed. So that money is here, we're going to receive another half of that. So if you load that up, same thing with our TOT. So we get TOT, it's a trailing index, so, or index, excuse me. So TOT for December is not due until December 31st. So we now have that figure calculated at $148,000 for December. Same thing with sales tax, that is $105,000 for December. And then the, the three figures I mentioned a few moments ago, the $96,000 rental income, 39 for cable franchise, and 36 for natural gas franchise. So if you add all of that up, that is not included in this slide, the 6.349 million. That's another $910,000. That kind of bumps up that 48% and gets us to 55% actually. So that's a more realistic picture of what we're looking at at revenue. So we're not really at 48% if we're actually going to move those costs to where they, where they should apply, so. Expenditures, that's a, ideally you'd like to have those numbers flipped. Revenue's way higher, expenditure's way lower. They're not, but there's some good reasons for that. One of the reasons and one of the culprits for that is the finance department as a whole. We had three employees leave. So Susan Slaton, the outgoing administrative services director, had some overlap with me. And then our senior accounting tech had some overlap with our budget and accounting manager and our senior accounting tech. So with that, there was an increase in personnel cost. There was a pretty big spike in fire department overtime costs, as you'll notice on, excuse me, I should have noted the page on here. So on attachment one, if you look at page 18, the overtime costs are at 478% of what we had budgeted in there. Looks like a real big scary number. Chief Knuckles is a good guy, he has his crews go out and help with mutual aid fires, kind of statewide and major events. Had quite a few of those hit this year. So we can talk about what the impacts of that are going to be in a minute, including offsetting revenue that more than cover the cost of, of that 478% overtime cost that we've seen. And then the, the public works general fund costs, if you look at those as a whole, they are up. If you, so if you roll all of those general fund departments up and look at the labor cost applies and all of that, they're actually at 56% expended, which is a little bit high. But I'm sure Rob can give you a better breakdown of the, the projects where a lot of those staff members for the second half of the fiscal year will be charging their time out for some non-general fund, probably some street work and some other CIP-related work. So it's not a scary 55% that'll trend to 110%. They should actually be charging their, their time to some non-general fund sources. And then most transfers out of the general fund have already been completed. So we had a budgeted figure of 1.158 for the year out of the general fund. We've already done $1,012,000 of that, so it's 87%. It's a pretty big figure. A lot of that is just done because the general fund has cash on hand to make those transfers out, like the IT department, that's predominantly funded with the general fund, so all that money just went out. So they had operating revenue. T-bid received $60,000, and there were some other transfers like that that happened, so. So this is a really hard graph to read, I apologize. But this is kind of the synopsis of what you have in your package here under attachment three. So if you look at the reso and look at the attachment A to that attachment three, that's the breakdown. And what should be noted, it's the revenue changes in the top section up there. And on the expenditure changes on the bottom, you'll notice that figure in the middle, which is the proposed figure of $949,471, does not match what you have in your attachment. It was just a simple, it didn't pick it up on the calculation when you ran it out. So on your attachment, you'll see a number of 602365. That's incorrect. That number should read 949471. Apologies for that. So a quick breakdown of what we're looking at.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Where is that?
Yes, so your attachment three to the item, which is the budget resolution, following all the budget performance reports?
Mm-hmm, that's where it is. I was looking for that earlier, too. Just before the slide. Yeah. It's page.
Oh, there we go, page 227.
It's page 226 of 246. 226. Thanks, Lori.
Okay, so kind of walking through our recommended revisions on strictly the general fund side of the House. The top line there is an adjustment, as I mentioned, to the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees. That's to bring our budgeted number up to the state and county confirmed number. So that's going from the $853,000 to the $972,000 and change, an increase of $119,106. As I mentioned, there's been a, some strong performance in TOT, which is good news. So as of right now, we're at roughly 5.7% above last year's figures. Unfortunately, with Highway 41 closing some rain, that trend likely won't trend through the end of the fiscal year at 5.7%. So we budget roughly 3% increase. We feel safe with that number, so going up from 3.309 up to the 3.374, so an increase of $65,000 for TOT. And then as mentioned, in the fire department, overtime and mutual aid offsetting revenue I mentioned a few minutes ago. Chief Knuckles has that mutual aid reimbursement out, so that's $171,849 confirmed figure. So we're recommending bumping up that line item in Department 42, the fire department budget. So it's a total revenue increase of a little under $356,000, you'll see on the right column there. So what we're recommending doing with that to have offsetting expenditure increases are bumping up regular pay in the finance department, as I mentioned, because we had some overlapping in staff to make sure we're kind of trained and know what we're doing and can give you numbers, which is a good thing. So it's a $40,000 increase for regular pay. Another $2,000 broken down between professional development and associated meals and lodging. And the remainder is $116,238 in overtime pay for the fire department expenses. Almost all those are attributable to those mutual aid responses. $40,071 for outside vehicle repair and maintenance in the fire department. They had some engine issues, some kind of major issues that hit their, their capital replacement or vehicle maintenance costs. $13,171 in small tools in the fire department. $2369 in the emergency operating center budget, and that's under computer operating supplies to purchase three laptops to improve emergency operating center operations. And then lastly, if you subtract out those figures so far from the $353,000, or $355,000, excuse me, that leaves $142,106 remaining. So what we're recommending doing is setting that aside in the general fund emergency reserve. So that's that bottom line on there. All right. Off to non-general fund. Okay, so measure Q, the revenue is coming in as expected. It's not trending higher or lower than anticipated, it's coming in right at level. As noted on there, and Public Works Director Livik mentioned a few minutes ago, they're looking to spend quite a big portion of that for road and maintenance work to come. T-bid revenue, so the 3% incremental TOT on hotels and motels is coming in higher than expected, which you would expect given our TOT revenue is coming in higher as well. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. Water revenue is coming in as expected in the water operating fund. However, expenses are less due to timing of state water payments. So just when our payments go out to the state for the water that comes in in several projects that haven't hit yet. So they haven't worked a ton on the water master plan, the desalination operations plan. Unfortunately, we haven't had a lot of need for the emergency work set aside. So there's $200,000 in their budget for emergency work due to pipe breaks or things like that. Harbor revenue is at 38% due to grants not received to date. So there's $293,000 built into the harbor budget, and we just haven't received those grants yet. Expenses are trending as expected, I believe is at 48%. And then risk management, they show almost all their expenses at the front end of the year because we pay all of our CJPIA. Our invoices come in at the front, at the start of the year. So because of cash flow issues with some of the other departments, we bill those out every month. So slowly, the, the risk management fund will be bringing in fund through journal entries, which we're working on. So sewer revenue is coming in as expected. However, expenses are less due to timing of money needed for the wastewater treatment plant transfers. So the quarterly billings we do, based on flow. So that would be the percentage of flow that the city has and Cayucus has. So we'd only build a quarter of those billings for a quarter of the year to date. Our second billing is out the door now, but we haven't received those revenues yet or transferred those over from the sewer operating fund. And then the expenses for the wastewater recovery facility were transferred in from the wastewater treatment plant fund 599. So if you look at attachment two on. Two on page eight, which is page 216 of 246, you'll see Department 8312, which is titled wastewater treatment plant relocation and treatment. All the expenses to date that were formally hitting the 599 fund have been moved over to the 321 fund, and that was an auditor's requirement. So as you'll see in the bullet down below under wastewater treatment plant, what we plan on doing is bringing forward a budget amendment the next time the quarterly WRF project is brought forward for an update. And it's not to increase or decrease expenditures associated with the project. It's simply to move the budget out of the 599 fund and into the 321 fund to hit right here. And that's an auditor's requirement. So hope that makes sense.
I just have a quick question on that. When you talk about auditor's requirement, you're referring to the audit report that came to us about a year ago and reported some audit findings and recommendations on, on some of the reporting. Is that reflective of that point right there?
Partially, but the updated version of that. So one that. So one that our auditors, the Poon Group, will be bringing forward probably in two months or so.
Okay. So, I mean, what you're showing us here is already reflective of some of the recommendations the Poon Group made as far as some of their audit findings.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so under the wastewater treatment plant, so the Fund 599, as mentioned, only the first quarter treatment plant billing has been done to date. Second billings are out the door, we just haven't gotten the revenue back or the check back from Cayucos yet, and we hadn't transferred the money from the 321 operating fund over yet. So that'll happen shortly. As mentioned, the expenses from the WRF were transferred out to the sewer 321 fund. And then again, we'll be looking to come forward with that budget amendment, simply to transfer the budget, not increase anything like that, the next time the WRF project is brought forward, which will likely be in March. So that was a lot of words and me rambling to only have some very small adjustments in all the non-general fund items. So again, if you look at Page 228 of your agenda packet, has the breakdown of the non-general fund items. Of those, the noted strong performance to date for the T-bid levied assessments, so they're 3% on top of the rental rate for the hotels and motels, it's coming in, you know, really strong as well. So recommending increase of 33,000 of that. And the expenditure increases associated with that 33,000 are 24,000 for summer 2017 promotional spending for tourism here in Morro Bay, and another 9,000 to purchase some customer outreach files to update our databases to make sure we're targeting the correct people. So with that, staff is requesting council approve the attachment mid-year budget adjustment resolution and attachments, or make adjustments as you see fit, and we can make alterations to the Attachment A and have that ready as well.
Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just expand on that last request, and that's the T-bid request. So first, just a quick sort of analysis of TOT. August, September, and October was pretty flat. We've discussed that some and heard it from some. Occupancy was a little low. Average daily rate was actually a little bit stronger, but in October, I'm sorry, August, September, and October, we had 0% TOT compared to last August, 0% increase, then 6%, then 4%. So 0, 6, and 4, that was pretty flat. November and December have both came back quite strong. TOT was up in November 14% over last year. In December, it was up 16% over last year. And average daily rate in December was up 7% over last year, and occupancy was up 9% over last year. So, for some reason, there was a little bit of softness in August, September, or October. Yes, we expect that January is going to be challenged with weather and with road closure. But I would, looking at November and December and how they've gone, I would anticipate that TOT will continue to perform quite well through the end of the fiscal year. So the two things that were, really the only two things in this whole thing that we're asking to spend new spending on, the one other one was sort of, was the planned, anticipated and planned personnel overlap for our finance personnel in the finance department, so that the new finance folks knew how to run things before the old finance folks left. The two new areas, and this is, would be spending T-bid assessed funds, not TOT, not general fund funds, but T-bid assessed funds, is $24,000 you see for summer 2017 promotional spending, and $9,000 to purchase customer outreach files. Just want to give you a little bit, a second sentence on each of those. In years past, the previous tourism management effort chose not to market the summer at all. It's a focused, all of the marketing dollars on the shoulder seasons and on winter, but did not, essentially went dark for three months during the summer. Jen's analysis and recommendation is that it's never a great idea to completely go dark for three months. A, summer can always be a little bit better, and also, just having your marketing out there in the summer may result and bleed over into the shoulder season past summer. The customer outreach files, the 30-some-thousand email addresses that we have for, to do essentially direct marketing via email, a very, very lopsided percentage of those are, no surprise, but are from the Central Valley. What this $9,000 is, is to purchase customer contact information from market, from other markets, including LA, the Bay Area, Silicon Valley, in order to be able to market directly to a, not, we're not going to quit marketing to the Central Valley, but to market better and more directly to the LA basin and to the Bay Area. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll start off with questions. I don't have any speaker slips for this item, so I'm just making that out there for those in the audience. But, questions? I'll start with Marla on the end, and then work back this way, so I'm kind of starting this way tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Craig. I should tell you that I sent Craig a two-page list of questions on this report, and one of the reasons that I did it was that my experience on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee taught me to read these reports very, very carefully, which I did do. So I did not have a chance to read all of Craig's responses to all of the questions, which came a little too late for me at this meeting. But I want to just mention a couple of things that I think are important enough that we need to maybe talk about it and look at it. The first thing that I suspect that's going on in this report is that there still is some mix, mixture of the current wastewater treatment plant and the new WRF. And I realize that you're making progress in that direction, but I, in looking at this report, I think there's still overlap, and it's very difficult in reading this to see which one is which, and where the expenditures and the revenues are for both separately. And I'm glad that you're moving in the right direction, and I think that'll happen, but I still think that that is the case. The second concern that I had is that I believe that some of the monies, especially in Public Works, that probably went to the wastewater treatment plant or the new WRF are still in the Public Works budget. And if you look at Page 187, regular pay in Public Works is at 112% of budget, and I don't think that's the case. I suspect that, in fact, transfers have not been made to the water and sewer fund. Because the overall for that, for Public Works, is 74% of budget, which, that would be of great concern at the six-month mark unless there is an explanation for it, which, as I say, I suspect that it's work that was done on those funds, and the monies should be transferred from those funds into the general fund to cover those expenses. The other thing that I want to mention, and this is something that is of also concern, and that is if you look at Page 189, consolidated maintenance, you'll see again that all of the personnel costs in the maintenance are over 60% at the 50% mark. And I am really concerned that we have to keep our public areas clean, and we can't have trash. And so, if we're going to make a budget adjustment, unless you, for some reason, anticipate that maintenance costs are going to go down, and I don't know why that would be the case, I would recommend adding some of that money to cover any additional maintenance costs. Because it's the case for regular pay, overtime pay, part-time pay, standby pay, other pay, all of them are 61%, 311% of budget, 90% of budget. If we're going to maintain our public areas, we are going to have to spend the money, and I think that's a priority. So, that would be my other recommendation. The other thing that I just want to mention, and I know that we've said it in the Citizens Finance Committee as well, and that is, it's really hard to read a report that's this detailed and complicated. And it would be so nice to consolidate it down into a more readable form for us. I did take the time to go through it line by line, but unless you have some experience with it, it's really, it's a daunting document. And I think it would be helpful if we could work on that in the future. So, those are my questions and comments, I guess.
Thanks, Marla. John?
Thank you, Craig, for your presentation work and all the information that you sent out. Couple of few comments, or excuse me, questions. Regarding the TOT issue, Mr. Buckingham went over August through December, what happened in July? That's only five months. Why didn't you include July?
July, because it was good. July TOT was up 11% over last July, and then August was up 0%, actually a 0.3% decrease from last August. And then, September was up 5%, 8%, 6%. October up 4%. November up 14%. And December up 16.2%. So we are currently tracking 7.5% ahead of this time last year after six months. And we projected, sorry, we projected, our revenue projection was to be 5% ahead, and we're at 7.5% ahead.
So my question is, when you analyze that for that six-month period, is it rate-related, or is it occupancy-related, or is it a combination of both? And what are the numbers? In other words, what happened to occupancy between July and December? Occupancy rate?
Occupancy was, I'm going to generalize here because I don't have all of the, all those month numbers right at hand, but occupancy, as we heard from some of our hoteliers, was generally flat in August, September, October. However, except for August, TOT receipts were still up. So actually, what happened there is rates, average daily rate increased moderately, so that even though occupancy stayed flat, TOT still increased moderately because the cost of hotel rooms had increased.
So I was just thinking, from a performance standpoint, a true measure of the effectiveness of the promotions and advertising that we're doing would be an increase in occupancy. That would obviously lead to an increase in TOT. Average daily rate increases have to do with hoteliers changing rates, and, I mean, that just happens. And so my comment would be, I guess, or I guess question would be, is there any adjustment to our promotions and marketing plan that will actually improve occupancy? And it would be interesting to know what that might be, and that would be maybe just for future reference.
Two thoughts on that.
Sure.
One is that, yes, hotel owners do adjust their rates, and sometimes they do that accepting that occupancy is going to, a higher rate is going to cause occupancy to be a little bit lower. And for short periods, quarters, maybe year, there's actually, can be a benefit because the fewer rooms you have used, the lower your maintenance costs and electric costs and those things are. So there's, I've had some in-depth conversations with some of our hoteliers on this, and there's a key relation between average daily rate and occupancy. Your question, more to the point, was marketing. I'll say that the city, as you saw in this adjustment that we're requesting tonight, the city is executing the marketing plan that was developed by the former tourism management group.
And board.
And board. So the, but the Morro Bay Tourism Bureau was active through the end of last fiscal year. The plan that we're currently executing is the plan that was developed by them. You'll notice that Jen saw a concern in that plan, and that was to not do any summer marketing, and we're making modifications to it. Jen finally got to work in...
July 1.
In July. And as we all know, marketing doesn't happen like that. And so, I'm very pleased to see November and December looking quite strong over last year. And so Jen got here in July, got her feet on the ground, started making adjustments, and I think, I don't know if she thinks this, but I think we're starting to see the effect of some of those adjustments and some of the work that she's been doing.
Good response, because, you know, I really think that, you know, the TOT is a major driver for us, and it has to be. You know, the hoteliers talk about heads and beds, it's all about heads and beds. And so, a major increase in occupancy could contribute significantly, obviously, to more revenues long-term. Two, it appears that outside of the fire area, we have an overtime issue. I noted it in a number of departments, that we have significant increases in labor, and then overtime is one of those components. And I could delineate that, but I'm not going to take the time to do that. And so, my question is, do we have an overtime control plan in place for measuring and monitoring that, just to make sure that we're in line? And if not, could we develop it? Or maybe you disagree with the comment? Or observation, I should say.
I guess I'd open up to any department heads, if you've identified any, perhaps other than fire, because we know about your overtime. Well, no, you've got some internal overtime issues as well. But why we might see an increase in overtime, and whether that is necessarily an increase in total compensation, total pay, or is there a requisite decrease of some other pay area? Steve?
Well, one thing about fire department, we have constant staffing, so if someone calls them sick, training, or industrial injuries. Right now, I have one injured firefighter, so I have to cover him. It is a kind of a tricky scheme, but I do have an internal mechanism that I use to help me regulate my overtime cost. One thing about overtime costs, at times, it's cheaper to the city to have overtime than actually hire more firefighters. Currently, I have 12 positions, I'm covering with 11 people, and the 12th position, I cover with part-time help and also overtime to make it work. And so I do start off with a plan at the beginning of the year, and at times, it depends how many calls I get, it depends how many first, second, third alarms I get, how much mutual aid I get. That kind of dictates the overtime that I have to put out there. But the key thing is, I have to have constant staffing of four people on duty.
Yeah. I said except for the fire department.
I apologize. I didn't mean to accept.
I got, that's a great explanation. I left you behind and looked at the other departments, because I know what your issue is. So, just a suggestion, if, and I'm not going to take the time to cite all of the areas, but I can give them to you or forward them to you. The third thing that I noted is sales tax, which is another huge revenue opportunity. Have we took a look at our biggest retailer, retail contributors to sales tax? And for instance, is it, you know, company X or Y or Z? And how is that changing from quarter to quarter? And how is that changing from quarter to quarter? And benchmarking to other communities to see where we might be missing out on opportunities for sales tax revenue from a retail standpoint?
We have opportunity to do that, and that's one of the things that Akane will be digging into. You said retail, so just to make sure y'all have a good picture, our highest sales tax-producing businesses are our gas stations. Next highest group is hospitality, and I'll include both restaurants and hotels in that. Our retail sector is the, at least third in that grouping. Our retail sector is not our strongest sector. And we've had discussions around that area of what, you know, what do we need to do to improve that? And I think, yes, there's absolutely retail businesses that we could work to attract that would have a greater-than-normal improvement in our retail, since many of our retail shops are, don't produce a lot of sales tax.
Yeah. There are just opportunities, I think, if you look at the data comparatively with other communities, where we might be missing out on a certain retail product mix that is doable here, fairly simple to add to existing stores, just by comparing that data, and it's available, pardon me, on the California website. The other question I had, Craig specifically, is what is the category consistently that I see that's called? Pardon me, I thought I had the page. So many pages here. See, there's regular pay, other pay, and then there's another category that is called, if I find one, I'll get it. Sorry. It's
Would it be labor cost apply?
That's it, yeah. Labor, say it again?
Labor cost apply.
There it is. Labor cost supply. What? I don't, yeah. What's the difference?
Maybe I can explain it, because it'll answer another question that we had earlier. So, for example, our engineering group was, is 72% expended. Well, when they work on street projects or maintenance projects, they are supposed to charge their time to that specific department. They're not based in that department, so it gets, comes out of labor cost supply to pay them. Not all the time, does everybody good on their time sheet? So, Councilman McPherson talked about consolidating maintenance is 61% expended, yet if you look at storm drains, it's 12%. Street trees are 12%. And streets are 6%. Well, we know that we've spent 49% of our materials in streets with only 6% of our labor, and what has happened is people don't, we need to get better on this, apply their time to the appropriate area. So, we'll be making those journal entries and working harder on getting folks to accurately reflect the time in the department that they're actually working in.
Perfect. Thank you.
Or work on simplifying that, so folks don't have to charge 15 different departments in a day.
Also, I'll note that this process is working well, because Barb and, yeah, and Dave participated in our staff mid-year budget review. We had this discussion in that, and that's the reason why they didn't come to the mic yet and say, "You guys really need to look hard at this, because if you look at public works in the aggregate, then they are, labor costs in the aggregate across all of the public works, general fund departments are right about on the right line."
And I did. I added all three together and figured that out, but I just wasn't sure what the definition was. And because of my surgery, I didn't have a chance to get with you and talk with you. I'll just use City Manager 3110 as an example, Dave not picking on you, but it's the first one that comes up, and it's a consistent theme. Often, regular pay will be at budget, 50% for the year, but benefits will be significantly above. Why would there be such disparity in benefits not trailing regular pay across departments when regular pay is at budget, which would be 50% expended? I just see that as a pretty common trend. Any thoughts on that, or observations?
I know the answer on Department 3110, mine, no.
Just the first one I saw.
But it's, if indeed that issue is reflected elsewhere, then I'll have Craig or somebody else, but in my case, there's a specific reason, that there's a specific benefit that's paid once at the beginning of the fiscal year, and is, like some of the other things we've discussed, we pay for the New World Systems contract at the beginning of the year, and that's why that contract shows it being 85 or 90% expended. But by the time we get to the end of the year, it's at the correct line.
I just want to make a comment. I know we're in the mid-year budget, and mid-year budget, you know, this is more of a determination of reconciling where we would expect to be, and I know we're, this is probably one of the reports that we've had, more information than we have in the past, and I just want to encourage us to have the discussion on those adjustments instead of the details of the line items. So, I'm, you know, trying to be encouraging Councilmember Heding. I know you're in a lot of those details, but I would hope that we can have the rest of us get through some of this as well.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my other question is this. With regard to the requested $40,000 for overtime in the Finance Department, was that not anticipated when we first budgeted, or was that an issue that occurred after the budget cycle? Did we know we were transitioning, and I guess, why didn't we budget for it?
So, $40,000 not for overtime, but for additional regular pay. The, the Early Retirement Management Program was not, this budget was approved before the closing date of the Early Retirement Management Program, and thus, we were not sure that we would be losing two key finance employees. And so, that's why we're bringing it here at mid-year, because we, I anticipated this expense, because we made the decision to ensure that we had good overlap between Craig and Susan, but we didn't know that we were going to need that when this budget was approved.
Last question is, just a note that was made earlier. When will we see a report on the Poon Group audit management letter update, which is part of the mid-year budget review, I would assume?
We haven't scheduled that yet. That was received in May of last year for the preceding fiscal year. Hope to get that to you a little bit sooner than that. Like I mentioned a little while earlier, likely in the next two months or so. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Matt? Fred?
Craig answered all my questions by email, so thank you.
Okay. I just have, one question came up in conversation, so I know we're reconciling some of the expenditures from the overlap of the Finance Department employees, but my understanding was, we knew there was, we anticipated some neutrality to that because of Sam's departure. We knew there was, you know, we didn't have that expense until Akane came on board, so I was thinking there was, you know, some cost neutrality on that, not having the expense of the Deputy City Manager for some period of time. So, can you explain that?
Sorry, I missed the first part of your question. Is it that the
So, we were talking about adjustments because of the Finance Department employees, and we had some overlap, which, you know, I understand that, but when, maybe I'm just not getting this correctly, but, you know, with Sam departing, we had that gap in not having that expense. So, I guess I was expecting that there would be, we'd be cost neutral on those two overlapping employees, and then Sam's departure. We had a gap between his departure and Akane coming on board. So, I'm just inquiring about, you know, we're looking at some expense, but we did have a gap in that, so I was expecting to see some neutral adjustment on that instead of having the added expense.
So, in any case, we would need to get your approval to have that additional expense within the budget group. And so, that's what this is requesting to do, is to put that added expense in
Within that department.
Within Finance Department. And one of the places that will be paid from is exactly what you just described, a, some level of savings in the three- or four-month underlap between Sam's departure and Akane's arrival.
Those are all my questions, and I don't have any speaker slips, but I know we have some of our Advisory Board members. I'll open it for public comment if any of you, Barbara or anybody, have any comments?
Actually, if I may, Attachment 4 to the Agenda Item Packet is a quick PowerPoint presentation by the Citizens Finance
Okay. So, we want to go through that right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll just go back over his while we wait, if you have any questions.
Barbara, thanks for coming and staying and being patient with us, and to this point. Appreciate it. Dave, Cindy, thank you for, you guys for hanging out with us.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Staff, and Citizens. My name is Barbara Spagnola. I'm Chair of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and I'm here to give you a very brief, high-level overview of the Measure Q summary expenditures and revenue for the fiscal year 2015 to 2016. And that is in your Agenda Packet. Are we good? No? Okay. I have a USB drive if you need it. I do. Okay. So, while he gets that up, why don't I just go through the title page, and it is in your So, again, here's what I'm going to do today, maybe tonight. There we go. Thank you. Summarize the review of all Measure Q funds for the previous fiscal year, the transactions. Review, discuss our review, CFAC, of the first and second quarter mid-year budget review. We did a high-level review of that. Our primary focus was Measure Q in accordance with our charter. And then, a brief comment or two on the goals. Next page. We met December 2016 to discuss all these transactions, myself, the members that were present at that December noticed meeting, Bart Beckman, David Batant, who is here tonight, and Betty Forsyth. And what's important here is the financial summary. I'll review this quickly at a high level. Tax revenue for the fiscal year, $983,000 approximately, 984. Total expenditures for the fiscal year were $582,000. I will explain that on the next slide. There is, $200,000 was not a real expenditure. The ending fund carryover balance at the end of last fiscal year was $443,000 approximately, and we have a balance in Measure Q funds of $55,000, $56,000 to allocate that was unallocated. And basically, what that means is, at the end of the year, as after Craig has explained, all the adjustments are done, sometimes there's some excess funding that didn't get in the carryover. Now, if you quickly take the revenue minus the expenses, minus the carryover and the balance, you're going to say, "Well, how come you're off $100,000?" I didn't include in there, so as not to be confusing, but there was a carryover from the previous fiscal year of $97,000. So, if you start with that, add your $1 million almost in revenue, subtract your expenses, subtract what you're carrying forward, subtract what you have left to spend, you're at zero. Okay? Okay.
You're good.
Question, any questions? Okay. So, the next page, three on the PowerPoint presentation, all that is, is a summary of the $582,000 that were spent in Measure Q funds for the fiscal year. Over half of that was, almost half of that was the Fire Department. Again, the debt service is usually close to $90,000, that's on the fire station, the 15-year DOA loan, and the vacation relief person, so we can maintain the fourth-person, four-person Fire Department personnel. And as you see, as you heard earlier tonight, some of that has to be transferred, but that's where that goes. $68,000 for the Police Department. We subsidize, as you know, usually, right now, it's running about 50% of the school resource officer at the high school, and then the rest was for canine food and boarding and training, and a few other miscellaneous expenses as well. Minor expenses, storm drains, creek maintenance, street maintenance, and then $200,000 was actually a transfer to the previous fiscal year, be very clear, for street maintenance, 2014 to 15. And again, that's a timing issue, when the major street repairs were done two years ago from today, approximately. So, that's what we have. That's where the $582,000 went. Again, Committee had a few recommendations. Any surplus in Measure Q funds should be allocated to streets, and we are recommending that the $55,438 be allocated, $448 be allocated to street maintenance. And that's consistent with previous year Measure Q Committee recommendations. That seems to be the highest priority, so that's what we're recommending. And of course, continued progress on funding categories identified in the 2006 ballot initiative. Moving right along, Slide 5. Again, we also met the Committee CFAC in January to go over the mid-year budget review. All our questions were answered satisfactorily. I will reiterate, we did a high-level review, not down to the detail level, and were satisfied that all the revenue expenditures were in line after considering all the changes and transfers needed. Two members attended the City Manager Budget Presentations Mid-Year Review prior to that CFAC meeting. And our only recommendations are a couple things. Basically, continue to provide summary budget reports. As we've been discussing, we're working on that. Also, we, if it's not too disruptive to your process, your staff process, we like to continue to involve our members in the internal staff budget review. I find that very helpful and informative, especially since presumably we'll be getting some new members. And then, in relation to goals, we did discuss, just at a high level at one of our meetings, we do believe that the goals should be tied to Department Managers' performance metric goals in some fashion, where possible, where you can establish smart metrics that are measurable and attainable and realistic, et cetera. So, and a couple of our members, also myself included, attended the Community Goals Forum, so we feel our input was included there. Okay. One more slide. All I've listed is some upcoming activities. Again, none of this is official. This is just anticip- Again, none of this is official, this is just anticipation of what we think our workload will be coming up. And we're going to welcome and transition four new members. One is already seated, and presumably we have three openings on the committee, and we have some qualified applicants. So we will be not only welcoming them, but also transitioning them, and there's some, you know, orientation. So also, we'd like to continue to work with the city staff on our citizen-friendly budget documents. We did spend probably close to six months getting that three-page summary together, our CFAC team, including Ms. McPherson. That is on the website, and I'm working with Craig to get it up under the hot topics and in a more visible place so that we can maybe get some feedback from our citizens. I anticipate we'll be looking at the audit coming up soon and maybe give you some input on that. Also, we do want to update, we have that scheduled, we want to update our charter. We have that scheduled in conjunction with the development of our work plan for next year. And the reason being, that charter was revised two years ago when the expansion of the Measure Q committee was expanded, our scope of work, to include not just Measure Q oversight, but also additional finance. It's really more all-encompassing than what we've been able to achieve, and I don't think, my concern is if when we're recruiting new members, if they see this list we have out there, a list of some things that we, right now, don't have the expertise or the resources to accomplish, I believe the charter should be realistic in what we can do and what we have done. So we need some help there. And then perhaps maybe, if you want, we'll look at some long-term street repair financing options, we've looked at that in the past, or something maybe with water reclamation facility, budget reporting, et cetera. We're open to any of that. So I'll take a pause there. My committee members, anybody have any comments? Miss anything? Okay, spot on, I guess.
You are spot on. No, not for me, but I'll turn over to the board to my left or to my right, and my left and my right, even the way I look. Barbara and your board, thank you very much. Dave, Cindy, thanks for coming out tonight, you know, and sticking with us. I appreciate all the work. Just amazing, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. Look forward to continuing.
All right, thank you, Barbara. So getting back to our discussion for mid-year budget and our discussion with our Measure Q update, appreciate the update, and now it's a matter of, I think we've got all our, just want to cover, make sure everybody's got their questions answered on the mid-year budget amendments, and if everybody's copacetic with that or any comments. So I'm looking at, let me go back to that page. It's after, yeah, thanks. I should have moved that up to the other, yeah, here you go. So we have Resolution Number 0617, and we've got a schedule that was presented to all of us. Yeah, I either, unless there's any other discussion, I'd take a motion to approve recommendations that we have in front of us, and-
We do need to change that one number.
Yep. Okay, can we clarify that?
Certainly. So on Page 227, the bottom total number in the middle, on the Attachment A is listed at $602,365. The reason for that is it did not pick up the last line inserted, the $347,106. So that number should read 949,471. Everything else adds up and totals out, it just didn't pick it up in the calculation.
Okay. And that doesn't necessarily reflect the resolution and the attachment for this, for what we're discussing, though? That's just the line item that-
It does for the attachment, yes.
Okay.
I just have one question then.
Oh, pardon me, Craig. I got you, thanks, sorry.
Okay. I just want to make sure then from Mr. Leivik that he feels confident that there's enough money in the budget to cover maintenance for the remaining six months of the budget year.
Definitely.
All right.
Definitely. We just need to make some transfers to the appropriate funds from consolidated maintenance.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that that's the case.
The guys have been doing the work. They just, we just need to work better on our accounting.
All right, thanks.
Okay, with that, so unless there's any other discussion, I'd take a motion to approve Resolution 0617 and the recommended adjustments as stated by our finance director. So moved. So we have a motion and a second motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. Any further clarification on that? I'm looking at staff, is that, are we okay on that? Good on that? Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. Thanks. Just real comment, aside from Measure Q committee, Barbara, you guys coming out, the level of detail in this mid-year budget amendment discussion, I just want to compliment Craig and his staff and everyone, thank you. Great presentation and just high-level detail, but always prompts a lot more discussion.
So I'm happy to be here, happy to provide that level of detail. Believe it or not, I had a ream of paper that is about 800 pages, and then I thought of you, so I boiled it down a little bit, so.
Thanks, yeah. All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and that would be Item C2, Discuss Fiscal Year 2017-18 Goals and Objectives, and that would be our city manager and team.
Ready? Mr. Mayor? Okay, Mr. Mayor, counsel, the purpose of this item is to have an opportunity to discuss the, your FY18 goals and supporting objectives. This is the process we've been in. We've now completed two study sessions and a community goals forum. We are in our first discussion in a regular council meeting, and if we get things up pretty close here, then we should be able to, you should be able to approve these goals and objectives on schedule, which is next council meeting, likely on the consent agenda if we get things straight tonight. Would like to take a moment here and review the comments, a synthesis of the comments that were received at the community goals forum. Just every time we've done this, we wanted to make sure that we identify and talk about the comments we've received from the community. So here's what we believe we heard. The community appears to be generally satisfied with the four new goals and the objectives associated with those as presented at the goals forum and as is in your packet tonight. The community appears to appreciate the sort of expanded explanation of each of those goals. The four goals appear to address the highest priority issues in the community. The community generally appears to agree with the prioritization of One, Two as essential goals and Three, Four as important goals. I'll note that there are very strong, that very strong support remains for improving streets, but that with few additional resources available for increased street work, it seems appropriate to keep infrastructure and streets as an important goal, while fiscal sustainability and WRF remain essential goals. The only draft objective of all the objectives that were presented, and those are all the ones, again, in the staff report this time, that did not appear to have wide community support is paid parking. Considering our significant revenue issues, the paid parking was included specifically under improved revenues or improved fiscal and economic sustainability, so the council could discuss that tonight. The paid parking objective does not necessarily, need to highlight, that objective does not necessarily mean the council will eventually determine to implement paid parking, but it identifies paid parking as worthy of analysis this year on whether or not that is something we want to weigh as we consider the budget challenges that we have. There were many ideas received from the community that are, I'll just say, there were many ideas received from the community. Those colored papers that were up on the wall with, that Dana did with all those ideas, many of those are reflected in the objectives and the goals. Some of, many also are not. The general reasons why some of those community ideas are not reflected in your current goals and objectives are, A, the city doesn't have adequate financial resources to implement that objective, and I, objectives should be feasible and achievable. The second is that the priority may not have been high enough to make the list this year. You had provided guidance to reduce the number of objectives to really focus our attention. And third, it may be that in some cases, there was limited community support for an idea. Somebody had an idea they thought was great and not everybody else thought it was. Finally, the, there's strong support, for example, there's a great example of one of those. There's strong support for undergrounding utility lines, but that's probably a $50 to $80 million bill for the city, maybe more. So even if the city committed all of our street money to undergrounding utility lines and not to streets, it would take us 50 to 80 years right now to underground our utility lines, and it doesn't appear that the community places a higher priority on undergrounding utility lines than it does on streets. So that's a great example of something that gets lots of green dots and everybody thinks is a great idea, but we simply don't have the resources to even come close to doing that. There's strong support for continued bike and pet improvements, including relatively inexpensive items such as additional bike racks at parks. If you came in the front door of Vets Hall, you'll notice the new bike rack in front of Vets Hall. Staff will include some of those items in the budget process and bring those to you in the budget process, so they don't necessarily have to be in the goal, sitting on the goals and objectives in order for us to recommend $3,000 for additional bike racks for Delmar Park or Tidlin's Park or something like that. Finally, the mission statement appeared to be quite well-accepted. Two edits have been made from the draft that was at the forum, those were in your staff packet, and we'll have an opportunity to discuss those in a moment. So that's a summary of the comments. Now for a review of the city's four goals and 25 supporting objectives, the draft goals. I don't intend to read this word for word, but to summarize, what I do intend to do is make a clear point. If there is a recommendation, we change a word or a phrase or something as we go through here, so you might want to note those, and I'll be very clear about that, and then you can discuss those. So Goal Number One, an essential goal, is to achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. The descriptor says that we're not currently able to fund all of our basic services, our general fund revenues are about 25% below where they need to be in order to provide those services, and this goal addresses controlling costs, improving revenue, and improving our general economy so that we can increase our revenues to the point that we can pave our streets and replace our bathrooms and those things. It's an eight-year goal. We intend to achieve it by fiscal year 2025, and some of the objectives associated with this, the first objective, and we believe we discussed this three weeks ago, the first objective is not easily measured. It doesn't have great metrics associated with it. Most of the other objectives do, 3% here do 10% of this. But staff had the discussion, and we really see this as a descriptor of, a general descriptor of some of our economic diversification, to help us, to help guide our economic diversification efforts. And this objective also includes specific reference to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We should be getting the completed plan in the months ahead, and when we receive that, then we can look at the details in that, and this will allow us to begin to implement those things. Number Two addresses the Morabey Power Plant and to be proactive in pursuing relationships that might result in the demolition remediation and redevelopment of the 106-acre power plant site. Goal Three addresses taking action to improve by 10% over FY16 levels, our shoulder season Objective Number Four under Goal One is an incentive program to upgrade some of our hotel stock. Objective Number Five is facilitation of revitalization or redevelopment activities that would, might result in planning approval for a 3% increase in number of hotel rooms. Number Six is more general revitalization, and we'll recommend a change here. In the second line, it says, including encouraging sales tax-producing digital or other non-impactful industries. Recommend that we strike sales tax-producing. It's great to have sales tax-producing retail, and that often produces sales tax, but we think it's equally good for us to have a 15-person architectural firm on the second floor of a mixed-use building downtown, and while they're not sales tax-producing, that would be a great economic benefit to the city, head of household jobs. Number Seven is to consider, bring to council consideration for paid parking. Again, here is a recommended change to this one based on the public comment that we had earlier. Recommend that we change this to read, research and bring to council consideration of various approaches for parking management, parentheses, including paid parking, close parentheses, in downtown and/or in Barcadaro areas. So I thought that was actually a great point and public comment to say parking management in general, because there may be other things besides paid parking that are important to consider there. So that's it on Goal One. Goal Two, this is another essential goal, to complete the WRF project and One Water Program. Pretty self-explanatory at this point, I think, to work toward achieving water independence by completing the WRF project and a One Water Program. Again, here's a recommended addition to this descriptor, again, from the same public comment. Recommend adding fiscally conservative before comprehensive. So in the, I'll just read the first three lines. This essential city goal centers around completion of the city's water reclamation facility and includes implementation of a fiscally conservative, comprehensive water resource policy, and goes on. The draft objectives, the first one addresses completing a rate study that will be this spring and early summer. The second addresses completing the EIR by the end of this year. The third addresses application for a state revolving fund reconstruction loan. The fourth directs acquisition or purchase of the preferred site once the EIR is complete. The fifth addresses the design-build contract and releasing an RFP and selecting a design-build contractor to actually build the WRF. The six addresses to take all appropriate action to allow the council to make an informed decision that would result in the out years in water independence and perhaps completely weaning off of the state water project while not giving up our state water allocation forever. And Number Seven addresses the One Water Plan for the city, that's sort of a key component along with the WRF of this goal. No changes to any of these objectives. Goal Three, this goal is an important goal, improving infrastructure and public spaces. It talks about improving streets, bike and pedestrian improvements, and improving public spaces. At minimum, this is an eight-year goal, I'll just- At minimum, this is an eight-year goal, I'll just note that without significant improvement in revenues, the city will have very few resources available to make significant progress on this goal. As I noted, there are, there are smaller things we can do, bike racks and those sort of things, but we really need to address our revenue in order to be able to, for example, pave our streets. Speaking of that, the, the first objective addresses consider, or bringing to council for a decision whether or not to consider adding a street text to the November 2018 ballot. The second addresses the improving, the very degraded alley that leads to the fish dock offloading station between Togs and, and the water, and between what used to be Verge's Landing and the Coast Guard or the Harbor Office. A change here to this one, recommend actually that new language that you see in orange on the screen. It used to say Verge's Landing, actually that is now called Morro Bay Landing, parentheses, ex Verge's, just to make sure that we're clear about, since Verge's is up on market now, to make sure that we're clear about that. The third objective addresses a more holistic review of parking management plans and options, primarily in the downtown and waterfront districts, and specifically considers partnerships that may result in the construction of one or two moderately sized parking facilities. This is, again, a change, recommend change parking garages to parking facilities in this one. The objective four is, is to keep the Market Plaza project moving forward. It will move forward actually at the next council meeting to you to, to consider for RFQ, but we anticipate that that process will certainly move into the next fiscal year, and it's important to have it as an objective. And then the last is, addresses the boatyard, and based on your action earlier tonight on the consent calendar, recommend making a minor, minor modification to this. This did say to approve the feasibility study. Recommend we change this to say, complete the approved request for qualifications and, comma, if required, a feasibility study, comma, for a marine services facility, boatyard, et cetera. But to put right into here this objective now, the action that you took earlier this Goal four, the, this goal addresses, bottom line, completing the general plan, local coastal plan, and some other significant land use plans. We may actually be complete with this goal in two years, which would be great, so this is our only two-year goal. The others are in the six to eight, eight-year range. The objectives associated with this goal, objective number one is to complete the general plan, LCP. Number two is to complete the zoning code update that's been approved already. Number three is to keep affordable housing and vacation rental challenges in front of mind in all of the planning and processing that we're doing. Number four is to keep the code enforcement process moving forward, and especially to bringing back to you consideration of the boat RV and trailer parking that, that we stopped to research further based on public concern last spring. Objective five is to, addresses the secondary unit ordinance and to refresh the recently approved secondary unit ordinance to make sure that it is consistent with new state law. And number six addresses beginning to study now future use of the wastewater treatment plant site, so that we're in a position to, to actually begin master planning that site and working toward its revitalization in five years when the new water reclamation facility is complete. That completes the, the goal and objectives review, and Mr. Mayor recommend maybe we, well, actually, I'll run through the mission, the mission statements, so you can have that in mind in case there's time. So the mission statements often include both a task and a purpose. A task is sort of the essential things that the organization does. A purpose is why the organization does that. The mission is different from a community's vision. The vision is a statement of what we want to be in the future. The, the mission is what we're doing and why we're doing it. Ideally, a mission statement would be clear, concise statement of what the city does and why we're doing it. Some feedback we received was that the draft was a little bit too long and in some areas a little bit too wordy or fluffy. So this slide here shows the mission statement that was presented in the staff report and at the community goals forum at the top, and then at the bottom, it shows a somewhat refined version of that statement that is about, about 60% shorter, and you'll see the, in red there, the terms that were taken out of that. So the top one is a, is a fulsome four, or four lines, and the bottom one is two and a half lines, and you can see in red what, what was removed to achieve that. But recommend, Mr. Mayor, that we focus primarily on our goals and objectives. We can continue to work the mission statement in the, in the weeks ahead if we need to, if we don't get to that tonight. So that concludes the presentation, and staff is ready to, to listen to your input on this and to take copious notes, so that we hope we can end up with, with a document that's, that potentially could go through consent at the last meeting.
Okay. We've got about 50 minutes, and we'll, I don't have, we don't have any, for the folks that are watching at home, we don't have any more folks in the audience for public comment, and I don't have any speaker slips, so we'll move straight into questions, and I'll turn to my left, and maybe Red, you can start us off on some of your questions. We'll work it down to Marlese on the other end, and then work on our discussion points.
Yeah, I think the only question that I have after talking to Dave about this over the weekend is, under goal number one, objective five, the private revitalization results in planning approval for a 3% increase in number of hotel rooms. And I recognize that we are filling our rooms. I would like to say that we're going to upgrade our rooms in some way. I feel as if our city does not have enough three and four-star rooms, so I would just want to modify that.
You're on page two or page 234?
Well, that wasn't the question, was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it...
I guess I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right, well, then, then we'll, we'll get into comments. Matt, do you have, does anybody have any questions, or just all discussion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Okay, and I'll try not to make it commentary. On goal number two, in looking at the goals for the wastewater, WRF and One Water Program, looking at them, I know a lot of these are happening simultaneously, so it's not like we're just going to check one, because it's, we're doing them all together, are we not? All of these goals?
For all of these, on all four goals, many of these objectives we'll be working on simultaneously. Some of them must be sequential, and the WRF ones, many of those must be sequential. But as staff has opportunity, we'll be working on one, three, four, and seven under goal number one all at the same time. In fact, goal number one, we'll be probably working on every one of those all year.
And, okay, and then that leads the, my next and last question. As these are completed, how do you foresee saying, hey, staff, hey, we did this, but then bringing the council, will you give an update quarterly, or how, how do you think you want to do that?
Yes, well, next council meeting, in fact, we'll be sending to you on the consent calendar, the goals status tracker for this year that I sent to you a few weeks ago, but we'll do that both semi-formally, as I have discussions with you, make great announcements at council meetings, but also on a regular basis, do a goals of the status update, so that the whole community knows and hears where we are.
Okay. Anybody else for questions? Sure, go ahead.
My question. On goal number four, item, objective number four, bring to council the results of the code enforcement outreach. I, was my understanding that we were actually going to be doing that this fiscal year, not next fiscal year, but I just wanted to clarify that.
We're not sure if we'll get it to you this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and even if we do get the initial results to you this fiscal year, the follow-on from that will almost certainly roll into next fiscal year. For example, if there's code changes that, that we want to consider, I, I don't think that we're going to get through that one in one meeting, and it will likely be a process.
Okay.
And since you asked a question, Ms. McPherson, Joe just wrote a great note, should we have hedges addressed in here? This code enforcement one?
It, it is addressed in it by virtue of that section of the code, it says fences and hedges.
Does that push it into the next fiscal year?
It's in the report back.
So I'd just recommend then maybe that we, that we add in this one related to boat, RV, and trailer parking slash storage, comma, fences and hedges, comma, on city streets and neighborhoods. Because fences and hedges was one of the three hot-button components of, of that code enforcement piece.
Yep. Red, you had a question?
Yeah, something did occur to me. Under goal number one, we're going to be talking about a marijuana ordinance pretty soon, and is that something that might fit under goal number one?
Okay, so can we, I just, can we close the loop on the code enforcement thing? I thought we were, are we closing the loop on that? We're good on that? Okay, sorry, I was just a little, I'm sorry, go ahead, Red. Sorry. I thought you were kind of piggybacking on the other question, I just want to make sure we're, we're good on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was...
Okay. I'm sorry. Back to your question, on goal number one, sorry.
Yeah. Would it be worthwhile to add marijuana ordinance under goal number one?
We certainly could. It may, could well be a revenue-producing activity, and I'm pretty confident that it's going to roll into next fiscal year, that we're not going to finish our outreach and make all of our decisions in the next three months, so we certainly could.
I have a question and piggyback comment on to that. I guess my only, my question to that is, are we looking at a marijuana ordinance for revenue, since we're under this fiscal sustainability or, you know, safety and land use policies? So, you know, just being sensitive to all, you know, all that.
Oh, yeah.
Be considerate, yeah.
That was my question.
I'm wondering if it couldn't be included as a possibility if we thought of it as a revenue producer under objective number one there, without specifying it as something, because that's making an assumption about the direction we might be going.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
A balanced economic development approach could include that if...
I mean, that almost... There's some...
I would say...
There's some land use components in that, too, but we're...
Yeah.
We are already on, so having the robust discussion and the results of that discussion informing possible changes in our code is on this current year's objectives. We're going to continue that on to completion. Whether, whether or not it lands here, it gets called out under goal one or goal four.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're on a glide path to do that.
Okay, all right. Okay. So since we're, it seems like we're bouncing around, I mean, we've had, we've kind of gone through questions. You want to just go through goal number one, and we'll just, we'll all make our comments on goal, goal one, and then goal two, go three, go four, and we'll just start it. Red, do you want to do that?
Yeah, and I did mention this to Dave earlier, and he, objective number five, about the 3% in, increase in number of hotel rooms. It just, it seems to me as if part of that goal should be to increase the qual, to, as we increase the number, upgrade the quality of the rooms available in the city. And part of that is that with three and four-star rooms, we attract a more, we widen our target audience as well as upgrade the spending ability of that audience.
My comments would be, don't disagree at all, and in fact, objective number four specifically addresses renovation of existing stock to deliver higher average, average daily rates. I would be very comfortable with adding a qualifier at the end of three that says something like, especially considering three and four-star hotels, or, or something like that, to give added encouragement, believe me, staff is already encouraged this way, but to give added encouragement to, to encourage the development of higher, some higher-quality hotels to complement the few that we have. And we can craft that, if the council's comfortable with that, we can craft that into this, and...
That would be fine.
Is most of the council comfortable with adding something about quality to objective three?
Sure.
Objective three or objective...
I'm sorry.
Five.
Five.
Five, I'm sorry, I got confused. Five.
Yep. Anything else, Red? Just that one? Matt, on goal one, nothing?
John? Thanks, Mr. Buckingham, for not only a good process, very robust process of engaging the community, but also good presentations and involvement. Just a couple of recommendations on goal one. Number two, where it says medical center, the connotation most people have, at least possibly maybe just myself, but I think most people, is that we're talking about a hospital, not feasible for this market, I can guarantee you that. I suggest we change it to such as a, an ambulatory medical complex, which leaves it open to everything else, if that's okay with my, to my life.
Yeah, thank you. Dave and I have been searching for the right words, and I think you got them.
Thanks, John.
Then I added number eight, which might include the marijuana issue. Evaluate opportunities for potential new revenue sources and present options to city council for consideration, such as new tax opportunity slash utilities taxes slash special taxes, et cetera, et cetera. To capture the revenue piece? That's all?
Is it, it's okay, I'd, it'd be best for the staff to get a general consensus before of council on each of these before, so, so is that, I'll get the language back from Mr. Heding, but this is adding an objective to goal one, objective number eight.
I understand.
That generally says, and look for other revenue opportunities, especially in the area of taxes. Is that general consensus to include that?
The basic, you want, can you read that again, John?
Evaluate opportunities for potential new revenue sources and present options to city council for consideration. And I just put as an example on new tax opportunities, utilities taxes, special taxes, other.
Okay.
Districts, et cetera.
I mean, that could fall on the same things with a street tax initiative, I mean, that parallels it, but you're, yep, gotcha.
And this, this would be a great place to say, and potential marijuana taxes.
Sure.
That's the special tax that I was...
Okay. So there's consensus there from everybody we've got to heading on, okay, we're good. I think that's what we want, that's the protocol we want to do.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Marlese?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I just had some comments, and maybe you can help me with this. Okay. I just had some comments, and maybe you can help me with this. We have language in there, we're looking for incentives, revitalized development. And I've had some conversations and comments about the $3 million gap. And there's some misinterpretation of that. And it's been, actually, it's been a good discussion over the last couple of years since we've had our budgeting forecast tool to identify that picture. And I don't think even still, you know, there's still a clear understanding of what that is. I think until we did that, a lot of folks were just like, well, this is how we, this is how we run the city. We don't have, you know, X number of dollars to have a police department that's staffed with more employees or a fire department, et cetera. So I think that, I just want to bring that to our attention because we have this in this particular goal. And how that reflects to this being some sort of goal that we're opening up the floodgates to unencumbered development. And those are the sensitivities that I hear. So when we look at, you know, incentives and things, I think we need to reflect some of the thoughtful things that a lot of our constituents talk to us on council about, what's important to us. And I think, you know, I look about our general plan. So certainly we want to see, you know, some revitalization. But I would say if we have a completed general plan and a local coastal plan, that's the tool in which we do that. But I guess this is a long-worded comment on being somehow an integrating language that understands this is just not an open floodgate to, you know, unencumbered development. And, you know, that, those are some of the, so those are some of the things that I hear. And I just want to make sure that we can capture that. I don't have any specific language. I did, you know, I did look at the goal centers around economic development while adhering to, you know, our values, our community values, which, you know, honors the character of our community. I mean, I think there's some things there that I'm just going to leave it. I might work on it a little bit more, but I just want to throw that out there, that we recognize that, because I just want to make sure we're looking at that. Those are my comments. And I just, unless anybody can jump in on that, I'd be open to hearing what you all have to say.
I agree too.
Okay.
The thought just occurred to me in reading the description that we talk about cost control, and we don't really have an objective related to that. And I think taking a look at our budget and carefully examining if there's any place where we could gain efficiencies or cut costs would be another thing, another step that we could take. And since we do mention it, cost control, that implies that we would have an objective related to that.
That could be, we could probably word that in goal number eight. Under, while we're looking at revenues, we can look that, we can word something in that cost controls in there?
Yeah, I'd be happy to change it to evaluate opportunities for potential new revenue sources.
Objective, rather. I said goal, I meant objective, sorry. Sorry.
Or cost controls.
Yes.
Just add that.
Good. All right, on a goal...
Also, based on your previous comment, we'll take a look at maybe at the end of objective one, where it says including tourism, coastal resources, development, redeveloping, conservation, comma, that honors the character of our community. Or something right in there might fit nicely. Because that's sort of that overarching, how we want to do this objective.
Yeah, thanks. Goal number two, just going to start on the left. Red, if you can lead us off, and then we'll... No, okay, goal number two, Matt? John, Marlis? Okay. And then goal number three, Red? Improve infrastructure in public spaces. Matt? No. John?
I have one. Six, bring to council opportunities for public space improvement projects involving community volunteer organizations, trying to harness the power of free labor.
So can you read that again, please?
Bring to council opportunities for public space improvement projects involving community volunteer organizations, vis a vis rebuilding the Delmar bathroom, et cetera.
For those who want to, yeah?
Yeah. Stuff like that. There are a lot of cities that have volunteer groups that maintain their parks.
And can we, I think we've got a... Anything else? John?
Well, the couple of comments that I had, you've already taken care of. I was going to rewrite number five to reflect the fact of the RFQ. And I know you've already changed to parking facilities. So I appreciate your making those adjustments. Thank you.
Okay. I think the only thing on six I was commenting on was, you know, we have public partnership on our parks as it is right now. So, you know, whether or not it's public spaces, I think that's part of it, too. I see what you're saying. Okay. Okay, so there are consensus on number six? Red?
Just to piggyback on to John's proposal, we have a lot of that going on already. So I'm thinking that if we're bringing this to the council, part of that is we need to consider what people are already doing. And that implies some sort of organizational or something. Does that make sense?
An assessment.
Yeah, and are you asking me?
Well, yeah.
What's my intent here?
Because you brought it forward. Was that your sense also?
Well, my intent was really thinking about not repeating what we do, what we're already doing. But one of the things we continue to hear are, you know, we've got to improve our bathrooms. We have to improve our bathrooms. And so I have a real heart for that and a group that's interested in forming to make it happen, at least with a project number one, that will cost the city literally nothing. And so I'm thinking, my gosh, there must be other people with passions out there that we can harness for our public spaces to maintain and/or improve them. And I know we have quite a few now, but are there other opportunities? That's why I said evaluate and bring to council possible new opportunities. If you want to leave it out, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that in addition to the new opportunities, we need, we could fold in the ones that are already in progress. I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that. I just want to recognize that we do have a lot of that going on already. And they may come to the council for some sort of leadership or organization in addition, in concert with what, with the new efforts that you're talking about.
Dave?
What I sort of hear is to bring both these together is, I'm not going to try to write it from you, but reevaluate and look for new opportunities of our existing adopt-a-park program and new opportunities in public spaces to ensure that, A, we're inventorying what is already going on, supporting what's already going on, encouraging what's already going on, and looking for new opportunities with new groups or new locations. Is that, I think that probably captures what both of you are leaning towards. And so what I recommend is we can, the staff can craft an objective that meets that intent. And then honestly, I also need to do a little bit of self-assessment of the staff to figure, ensure that we've got capacity to be able to do that this year, just as we're adding objectives. But I'm hopeful we do. And it's all great because that's work that the staff won't then have to do. So that's all good, but, and...
Yeah, I just want to say if there are not heads nodding, then it has no support, and then just eliminate it. I mean, I'm not, it's not going to hurt me. Mine, anyway.
Yep. Red, any comments? Matt, any comments?
No, I'm good with what Dave said.
Matt?
I'd go with what Dave said, except, and then add this on goal four, number six, in terms of began community outreach. Because I do believe...
We're not there yet, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. Well, no, I'm just thinking where we could put this on these goals, that's all.
Okay.
But other than that, I would go with Dave's suggestion.
All right, thanks. Thanks. All right. Anything else on goal three? Marlis, you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay, then goal four, sorry, Matt. Red?
I'm good with goal four.
I'm also fine with it. And I would only suggest, as Dave and staff is taking the idea, and because I understand, John, you're not just talking about one item. And, but then, Red, I'm totally with you in conjunction in terms of the public outreach that we have right now to people working to do these. And so perhaps it would fit in goal four under six. But if not, Dave, I'd look for your suggestion coming back from staff.
Okay. John, Marlis?
Go.
No comments on this one. On goal four, objective five, we have, actually, on three, ensure affordable housing. So affordable housing is one issue. What about incentives? I know we want to get the secondary unit done because we have, we've already done that. But I think there's, there needs to be some incentive in there considering the affordable housing issue. And having reviewed that, there really isn't, we don't have any indicators that we're seeing a lot of applications or a lot of secondary units coming to the city, so...
Yeah, I mean, we get a few. I mean, we get a few every year. I mean, I've been here for about two and a half years, and we've had a handful through that timeframe, probably.
So is it adequate?
Probably, probably have gotten eight to 10 since I've been here.
Okay.
Which is bad. I mean, that's, you know, that's, you know, that's a pretty decent amount of ones coming forward.
I thought at the last report, it was, it was less than three, you know, according to our housing element. I was, you know, recall looking at that, and it was just, you know, over a five-year period, it was not really that good.
Yeah, adding the housing, we've gotten quite a few more, you know, of late. And picked up ones that we found along the way that weren't permitted and permitted them. Several of the ones that I'm referring to are those. But those are, those are fine. And now with the way that state law changed, I mean, there's a lot more flexibility in improving them, so.
So you see any value in looking, you know, in making sure that we're, you know, encouraging them, other than just writing something that regulates?
I mean, we can, we already have the goal to do that, or the objective to do the, to update the secondary unit ordinance. We could include it in there to provide incentives or to incentivize it if you want. I mean, when you look at what the state's done, you'll see that they've pretty much done that already by, you know, kind of opening the doors for them and removing the barriers. They've revamped the state requirements now, I think, three times or maybe four.
Okay, I'll let it go then.
Yeah, and each time they've removed barriers and...
Okay, all right, I'll let it go. If that's all for four, then I'll move on. So then, are there any other comments? Everything looks good. And then the mission statement, we want to just kind of keep working that a little bit? I mean...
Put it up on the screen, and I sort of glossed over it real quickly. We do have a couple of minutes, so this is, as it should, this has evolved sort of back and forth a bit. What was in your staff packet is what's on the top on the screen there. The City of Morro Bay provides customer-oriented, essential public safety services and basic infrastructure to sustain a positive and productive quality of life in our community, providing a forward-looking, safe, clean, healthy place for residents and visitors to live, work, and play. And a few things were added to that from an earlier draft, several earlier drafts. And we did get some feedback of, that's a pretty long mission statement, and it ought to be able to be something that employees can have memorized and at the front of their line. And if you're stumbling over forward-looking and customer-oriented and those things, then those are all things you want to be. But if we want to boil it down to sort of the essentials, then some of those things, it doesn't mean we're not going to do, be customer-oriented. But if I were going to keep one of them, I'd keep customer-oriented from my perspective. But it could be boiled down to something more like, the City of Morro Bay provides essential public safety services and basic infrastructure to provide a safe, clean, and healthy place for residents to live, work, and play. So it doesn't say the words quality of life, but quality of life is completely wrapped up in safe, clean, healthy place to live, work, and play. So I'm not sure you need to say quality of life if it's expressed that way. Or you could do it the other way and say great quality of life and take out safe, clean, and healthy. But I'll just turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, for any discussion or questions, or where you want to go with it.
Yeah, doing something like this, I think, you know, we had input from the workshop is a much more fluid way to do something like this and kind of distill it down, rather than go back and forth and wordsmithing something from the dais, but open to what, you know, the rest of council is looking at. John, do you have any comments? Marlis?
Yeah, I did. I just shortened it by crossing out safety because I think we do more than provide public safety services. So I think you can lose a word there. And then I cut out the last three words, for residents and visitors to thrive, as opposed to live, work, and play. But that's... I had.
Marlis?
I kind of hate losing quality of life.
Yeah, me too, but...
If we could add it back in, especially if we cut it down, I'd like to see that in there.
Matt? Matt?
John, I like your suggestion of taking out the redundancy of safety, not redundancy, but just the public services in terms of what the city offers. And Marlis, I'm with you in terms of the quality of life. But then I also like to live, work, and play because what we offer, folks, visitors, and residents alike, is more than just, I think, live, work, and play is more encompassing than thrive.
Red?
Well, I am a fan of short mission statements that just cut to the core of what we do. And to me, a mission statement is one sentence that describes what we exist for.
One long sentence?
Well, here's what I came up with. To provide a, our mission is to provide a safe place for people to live, work, and play. The meaning is unmistakable, it's memorable, and it's easy to apply. And what I look for in a mission statement is that every employee should be able to recite the mission statement and to understand how it relates to his or her job. To provide, my job is to provide a safe place for people to live, work, and play. I mean, every employee strives to do that. It needs to be short and punchy, and it needs to have direct application to what we do every day. And it needs to be the answer to every question that somebody asks. What are you doing and why are you doing it? Well, I'm providing a safe place for people to live, work, and play. And I think that's all we ask of our cities to do. A safe place is really our core responsibility. It encompasses police, fire, harbor, safe drinking water, safe disposal of waste, stormwater, streets, transportation, safe parks, safety through regulations. So that's where I am.
Cool. I looked at the original mission statement to start with, and I thought, well, that's short and concise. So it's interesting, all our perspectives. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, hey, that's okay. You know, I really wanted to just say thanks for having the workshop that we had. And, you know, I think we had a lot of good input from that, and, you know, just kind of build on what people were drawn to on that. You know, I think our mission statement should be reflective of what kind of input we got from our community. You know, short and punchy, sure. You know, I think, one thing I don't think it should be is, you know, try to be so all-encompassing that, you know, it's like two paragraphs trying to, you know, cover every inch of the town. So, you know, it's just kind of balancing the, you know, part of that. There again, doing this from the dais, I just find it kind of challenging. That's why I was more inclined to, you know, to look at what was the result of the workshop and kind of distill it there. So I'm happy with, you know, my colleagues' comments, but really, I think, having, you know, the community kind of distilled down some of the points from the workshop was really what I was looking for. So, you know, when I look at the top one and the bottom one, I'm thinking, hey, you know, we pretty much got there. It covers it. But I do agree that the quality of life, you know, I think those are, you know, things that are, you know, are part of us. So I'm not necessarily giving an answer to this mission statement because realistically, we got five different comments on the whole thing. And I think we can, you know, distill down what we've just discussed and make what we have work. Otherwise, we're going to be sitting there going back and forth and wordsmithing that. So I would, I would be delighted to just work with, unless there's more discussion that wants to take place on this and continue to work, wordsmith this, I think we can kind of drill down from what the community wrote and what we have here and, you know, add some, I think we've got quality of life in here, we've got some live, work, play. I think it kind of balances some of that simplicity. I know, Red, you were looking for maybe a little bit shorter than that, but I'm kind of looking at what the balance of what came of our workshop, I guess, is what I'm saying. So.
I think we're close. I mean, I think we were close with these.
Yeah, I think so too. I'd be fine if we can just kind of take that conversation and just work with that, and then we can come back. And I don't think the mission statement necessarily needs to be done with the goals. The goals, I think, we're good with. I think we can come back with that mission statement and maybe submit, you know, with that. Is that too general, Dave? Okay.
So what are we doing? What are you going to do?
I think we're going to have a new future agenda item sometime in the future to have this discussion again. Because what I heard was, it doesn't have to be done with the goals and objectives, and I agree with that. We could work for seven more minutes on it and see if we can come to a consensus on a mission statement, and you can take a look at it. Or I guess, or I guess we could, we could have, we could put goals and objectives not on the consent item calendar, but on the regular business calendar next meeting, it's a pretty full meeting. And we could craft three different mission statements, and you can make a commitment to choose one of them and not wordsmith them, or?
Yes.
But here's sort of what I, I heard a little bit of.
Keep going, might be able to just wrap this up.
I heard a little bit of consensus on taking out safety from public safety, and I was struggling with that a little bit myself. And I think that might be cleaner because then it includes, it wraps up all of the public services. Earlier, I was wondering, okay, should we put the planning department in here somehow? But if you just take out safety and have public services, then Scott's included. I heard, I think I heard more toward live, work, and play than I heard toward thrive. And I heard some quality of life, and if we could figure out how to jam quality of life into here, then we might be there. And only Mr. Davis would be feeling less satisfied than the others at that point because we might, we still have sort of this slightly longer version that, the way I would describe it, includes the essential tasks of what we actually do. And it's a discussion, there's no surprise, a discussion we had by email over the weekend of, I would personally prefer to see those essential tasks of what we are supposed to be doing in the mission statement, but that's your decision. So we could have, the City of Morro Bay provides essential public services and basic infrastructure to, somewhere in here, quality of life, a safe, clean, and healthy place for residents and visitors to live, work, and play. And if there's general consensus with that, then we can craft that and put it in with the goals and objectives. And if you want to pull it and scratch it and say, no, do a do-over, then we can. In other words, if we don't want to actually, if you want to give me general, give us general consensus on the way it's generally worded, taking out safety, keeping live, work, and play.
Yes.
And get quality of life in there, then we can do that wordsmithing.
Yep. Sounds good.
Yeah, I don't want this to drag out and become something that uses up a lot of time. But I wonder if we could ask our GPAC group for some help because they have been working on vision and values. And I wonder if they would want to review what you have and throw in their input.
The mayor's smirking at me as I smirk. Not smirking, chuckling with me as I chuckle.
There was mono-mono there.
I anticipate that if we take this to the GPAC, we'll have a complete do-over.
Yep.
And it will grow by about a factor of seven in length.
Yeah, and I think we got there from the workshop. Really, I think we started with it, and I think we got there.
It's the community's input.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think, yeah, I think that the last mission statement there with those adjustments you just discussed, I think will be good. We got consensus there? Yeah.
Great, thank you.
I knew if we started getting into wordsmithing, it could evolve.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but thanks. I think that worked out well. So then, let's go back to the beginning of this.
Mr. Mayor, based on where you've gone, I think we've got everything we need to do to.
There's, we don't, we just gave direction on this. We're going to come back with, with the finalized on this, so we're good to go. Okay. All right, so that completes item C2. And moving on to council declaration of future gen items, and I just wanted to bring back policies and procedures specifically around some of our advisory boards. And, you know, I've got some thoughts on languages and stuff to put some clarity. And, you know, obviously, that would be a discussion item on what those are. You know, I just want to have some more clarity on some of our policies and procedures as they relate to our advisory boards and have that discussion. So I would be interested in bringing that back and actually crafting some of the pre-craft, some of the language that, you know, I'd like to see in there, and then get some input from council on where we're going on that. And, you know, I'm willing to do that work. So I was just, that's a future gen item I'd like to work on. Sure, yeah.
Would you also include in there training?
Training?
For, I think the advisory boards would benefit from some general training on the way to run meetings and facilitation.
Yeah. So this one was more about the policies and procedures?
Well, I was thinking that might be a part of the policies and procedures.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll bring it back, we'll have that discussion, then we can talk about it then. Okay. Anything else? Seeing none to my left, none to my right. Okay, great. With that, our next meeting will be a special budget forecast meeting on Tuesday, February 28th at 4:00 p.m. And then we have our next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, February 28th, and that's at 6:00 p.m. right here at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks very much.